Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Pitko, Ms. Gerber, myself, Ms. Vitale, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Leeper, and our guest moderator, Mr. DeWitt. I ask you all to please stand for the pledge. Mr. DeWitt, will you please lead us in the pledge?
My honor, the pledge is to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming out. There might be still some chairs in the corner over there. I ask you just to, if there's a seat next to you that's free, just raise your hand so people from the back can sit if they choose. Okay, alright, well, yeah, there's extra chairs over here. Welcome, everybody. Mr. Asa and Ms. Maxine Canelli will be joining us shortly, hopefully. This is a town hall meeting. The Board of Education has a couple of these per year. This gives the republic an opportunity to come and meet with the Board and enable us to have a little more of a reciprocal conversation. So that I can participate in the conversation, we typically ask a moderator to moderate the debate. And tonight, Mr. DeWitt, who is the Vice Chair of the Board of Finance, was gracious enough to join us and sign on to moderate us tonight. So I am going to give control of the meeting over to him. Just a little bit of a format, the Board of Education typically allows three minutes for public comment. I think we'll start with that, a three-minute, but I will let you take it away, Mr. DeWitt.
Well, thank you for having me, Ms. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. My name is Chris DeWitt. Just a couple of things, so, three minutes, sitting at the table, making your point or asking your questions. Just to move the conversation along, so if someone comes up here and makes a statement, makes a point, like, Chris DeWitt is just killing it tonight as moderator, no need for the next person to come up and extol my virtues as well. Move on to the next point, so we can get as much time in, or for as many viewpoints as we can in one night. So, I guess everyone should sign in, is that correct? And address and name, is that the format, or just name?
Yep.
Okay, name and address, there's a pad up here. And after you get done with your statement or question, I'll call on the individual Board members, they'll respond, and we'll keep the meeting moving.
And in the essence of time, Board members who want, not every Board member will answer the question, if a Board member wants to answer a question, just raise your hand, and Mr. DeWitt will choose on you.
Wonderful. Alright, who'd like to start us off?
Is this Han? Okay, I have a green light, and I'm holding it, so, alright. As you know, I'm Jeri Ann Mitchell from the Early Childhood Center, and I want you all to know that the ECC is definitely in favor of Scenario 1, because as we said, we are stronger together, and we'd love to be reunited. We have felt some growing pains with the current split, and we will be sharing that with you. But in the interest of having the ability to ask some questions and get some answers, we have two primary questions right now. What factors will influence the selection of the different scenarios? And the second question is more of a, factored into the ECC decision-making going forward. When you listen to Rob's admission of the ECC growth at the last Board of Ed meeting, and knowing that our current numbers are still not at the 50-50 ratio that we're supposed to have for the state, you know, it means the ECC has the potential to grow even more than it already has. And if you factor in the current pattern of growth, you know, when we look at the fact that this plan will not be implemented for another year or two, possibly three if we're waiting for Mill Hill based on the discussions at the Board of Ed that we've already had, we have significant concerns that there is no room for growth for the ECC's growth in either Scenario 2, 3, or 4. And will we be back in the exact same position we are right now of having outgrown the space if we sustain or maintain 10 classrooms across the three different scenarios? You know, so those are my two primary questions.
Yeah, well, in terms of the, what criteria are we going to be using to make this decision? You know, I think there are nine Board members, and I think we all have different ideas about what, you know, we're looking for, and we've already started asking questions, as you know, from our first meeting when we got the Malona McBroom presentation. And we're kind of using that as a starting-off point, and I think they made it very clear in the presentation that any of the plans, 1 through 4, would probably not be implemented as they were written on paper, that this was simply a way to kind of start the conversation and take it from there. And so, you know, I think that, again, it's a work in progress, so I can't definitively say right now we're looking at X, Y, and Z. I mean, obviously, you know, there are concerns, you know, regarding what we've heard from the ECC parents and staff about wanting to have one location. I think there are other Board members who have concerns about closing an elementary school, and, you know, or repurposing an elementary school and the upheaval that that would cause. So I think it's really one of those things that, you know, as time goes on, I think people are just gonna have to keep following the discussion and see where it goes, because, again, what these plans are right now could end up being very different based on the questions that we've already started asking. And, I'm sorry, what was the second? Oh, the growth, the plans 2, 3, and 4. Again, starting-off point, so I think, you know, that will certainly, I mean, I think that was already a question that kind of came up at the table, and we would have to look into that more, because I think that that is something that we all acknowledge, that the ECC is continuing to grow, and we certainly wouldn't want to have to do one plan and then two years later have to redo it. That's the last thing any of us want to do. So, that's kind of, I think, to be continued.
Mr. Peterson?
Just to add briefly, I agree with everything Mrs. Gerber said. I'm sure that during this conversation, one of the things that we're going to talk about is our budget factors as well. Because as you know, when we were looking last year at various elementary sites for possible satellite ECC use, we went through rubric of, you know, which ones have air conditioning, which ones have the requisite number of bathrooms. If we do go with the plan to repurpose Jennings, how much more expensive would that be than other, than other factors? So just another thing that's going to enter into our discussion.
Hi, thank you for coming tonight. In echoing what the previous two Board members says, I would say that also, in addition to that, is impact on secondary. So how these scenarios play out for our middle schools and our high schools as well, in analyzing them to the existing conditions and how those relate back to what we have today, and how these different scenarios impact the full district as a whole. With the information that is available, and as Mrs. Gerber already said, there's probably additional information that we'll need to be gathering that's not readily available at this point, so it's an ongoing conversation. But in terms of what we've already said, that is another consideration, is how it impacts secondary as well.
Ms. Vitale?
And I think we also need to look at just headroom district-wide. So really having that utilization at every elementary school as well as the ECC to factor in growth. And that is really going to take, I think, more than just looking at Fairfield Public Schools, but looking at some of the development in town, and looking at it big-picture townwide. I don't think anybody, I think I speak for everyone at the Board, we don't want to be back here. We don't want to do something now and be back here in five years. Really try, and it's, you know, maybe the goal is lofty to think that if we do something now, it will have staying power for the next decade or more, but that's what I'll be looking at in addition to what Mr. Peterson said, just in terms about the budget impact. When we talk about repurposing an elementary school, I'd want to know, you know, is that too much space potentially for the ECC? Because that would not really be the best use of that space either.
Ms. Leeper?
One other thing I'm thinking about is we've got enrollment projections for 10 years, but a facilities decision like closing a school is really a 30- or 40-year decision. And so we need to also be weighing in that long-term impact, because we now have lots of historical data telling us that closing schools is a really expensive thing for Fairfield to undo, and so that's also something I'll be thinking about.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
The button, did that count toward my three minutes? Oh, I have to hold it the whole time? Oh, okay, starting now, okay. "The Jennings community stands together this evening to request that Scenario 1 be eliminated. While we understand that something must be done to bring the district into compliance with the state regarding racial imbalance, the result of closing Jennings as an elementary school is the underutilization of a centrally-located space feed our patterns that are detrimental to our children's well-being, the lack of addressing racial imbalance long-term, and inevitable overcrowding due to the influx of housing developments that are cropping up at increasing rates. Scenario 1 significantly underutilizes the Jennings facility, and costly renovations would be needed to make the space appropriate for a preschool demographic. This scenario also causes overcrowding throughout the district. McKinley would exceed the 90% utilization rate four times in the next 10 years. In nine out of the 10 years, North Stratfield would exceed the target utilization rate of 90%. Tomlinson would be at 100% utilization over the first three years, while Woods would be greatly underutilized, Woods being our biggest middle school. Ludlow would be overutilized for the next 10 years at a rate of 100%. As a reminder, the target utilization rate for secondary schools is 85%. At the same time, Ward would be underutilized at 78%. The state has charged us with solving racial imbalance. However, the percentage points between the scenarios are negligible. While all the scenarios help with the racial imbalance issue, not one of them looks to solve the problem long-term. Looking at data that goes back in time five years is not helpful. Our community is changing quickly. Our community is becoming more diverse. While we are dealing with a law about racial imbalance, it should be noted that Jennings represents the racial balance of the Fairfield District more than any other school. Yet, we are being targeted again because we are one of two small schools. While it is impossible to predict the future, what we do know for sure is that several housing developments are currently being zoned in the McKinley and Burr areas. It is reasonable to project that this will bring even more students and possible overcrowding to these schools. Jennings is uniquely positioned and centrally-located, making this school an ideal location to alleviate overcrowding through redistricting. It would be short-sighted to ignore the impact of these developments. Additionally, with Scenario 1, students who normally walk to middle school would now be bused to a different school across town. For example, we live a quarter-mile from Woods. Should Scenario 1 happen, all three of my kids would be bused more than three miles to an overcrowded school, where Woods, which is within walking distance, would have ample space. The same goes for elementary school walkers. What is the cost of busing a community of walkers year over year? What is the cost to our children? Fairfield has a long history of closing schools and later regretting it. Let us not have history repeat itself once more. As a community, as parents, as taxpayers and residents, we ask that Scenario 1 be taken off the table. Allow us to maintain the very special community that Jennings is and always has been. Thank you for your time."
Thank you for your support of Jennings. Who would like to take that softball? Mr. Peterson?
I may be the only Jennings alum here, so I'll take the responsibility to start. I'm pretty confident in saying that every person on this Board understands the gravity of potentially changing what we use the school building for. We had very in-depth discussions last year when the issue of, we make it a, you know, K-1, 2, 3, 5 plan. This was important to us to make sure that we trod carefully as we moved ahead. Personally, I considered the possibility of Jennings as an ECC site a long time ago. I did the numbers last year when we were having this conversation. At the time, I felt that if we did close it, then in the out-years of our enrollment projections, then things will get crowded elsewhere. I came to the conclusion ultimately that it would be difficult to lose that number of seats in the system as far as where the long-term projections went. At the same time, I see where the ECC is going, and I hear the voices from the ECC who are disappointed that the program is not unified as it once was. They're still working very hard to make sure everyone gets the same level of attention and support, but I think they feel very clearly, and they've stated very clearly, they want to do that in a single site. Given that Fairfield is not rich in vacant buildings that are suitable for this, we're in a quandary. So I do think that we're gonna, we're gonna move very carefully, and any decision that we make is going to be in public at this table, as transparent as we can be, after we've digested reams and reams of data, and to see what's the best solution. And I will just add one more thing. I do hear the argument that Fairfield has a poor record about closing schools. I have, there's not a day goes by at this table that I don't think to myself that Fairfield made a grave mistake in getting rid of Grassmere School. If Grassmere was open and available to us, it's the exact right size and exact, like, our forefathers put it in the right place. And so that was a, that was a decision that did have long, you know, decades-long consequences. So with that information in mind, with that perspective in mind, I'm not saying what way I'm gonna vote on this, but we are considering very, very carefully.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Ms. Pitko?
I think I'm sitting here like the other seven members when Mr. Asa gets here, and feeling like, no matter what we do, even if we don't redistrict, there's someone in this town we're gonna upset, and it's, I remember five years ago, when I was sitting there and not at the Board table, and we were talking about redistricting for very different reasons, being very angry at the thought that we were having this conversation. And now, sitting at this table for four years, I understand the position that we're in, because we keep putting things off for so long, that especially in the case of the ECC, they have just grown and grown and grown. No matter what we decide, whether we move the ECC into any one of those scenarios, we are going to be at almost maximum capacity in our schools. So that is a very real thing. We need to think about that three, four years down the road. No matter what decision we come up with, whether we ignore this altogether and vote not to redistrict, we're still going to have an issue. And I think that's very real for everybody who's sitting here, who's been asking questions, who gave a charge to consultants. We see the picture, we just don't like the decisions we have to make.
Ms. Maxine Canelli?
I'm not gonna repeat what my fellow Board members have said perfectly well, but I do think one very important point needs to be clarified to the public. By the way, you're allowed to stay there, because this, actually, we can have give and take, so just, you know, if you don't like something you hear, they can have follow-up. But one correction, I think, is very, very important to what you said. Jennings is not being targeted, and it's certainly not being targeted to fix racial imbalance. The whole scope, the whole idea of why Scenario, and why we are addressing Scenario 1 first, is because there's an ECC issue. So the whole concept of closing Jennings is not to fix racial imbalance, it's because we need a site for the ECC. So I think that's important, I'm not saying it changes anyone's view, but in terms of the conversation that we are having, I think that's a very, very important notion, that what we're gonna be debating next Tuesday, and having a discussion where we have this focus on Scenario 1, it's about what do we need to do regarding the ECC. Racial imbalance, of course, is part of this, that's what we've been saying all along between Walter Fitzgerald, between the ECC, between our facility utilization and racial imbalance. This is the time to address this, because we have this perfect storm of all of these factors. But again, just to be clear, Scenario 1 is not being looked at first and foremost as the way to fix racial imbalance. It would be, that's what is the will of the Board in terms of what do we ultimately decide finally, once and for all, I believe, to do regarding the ECC. That's the genesis of the Scenario 1 even being an option, and I just thought that was important to clarify.
Good point. Ms. Jacobson?
No offense, no offense. Just two additional points on that. Number one, when we gave the charge to Malona McBroom, there was no rank order. There wasn't a hierarchy. It was a series of issues that the district is looking at, and there wasn't one more important than the other. So at least from my viewpoint, it's everything collectively as a whole, and that obviously can be different for each person here in terms of their thinking process, but just to make it clear, there wasn't one thing more important than the other when we made that. And I had another point, but I forget what it was right now. So I just wanted to make that clear, that there wasn't a priority at this point.
Ms. Vitale?
And, you know, not to target anyone on the Board of Finance, but, um, that in, just in budget discussions, there has been calls over the years for looking for efficiencies, looking for structural change. I am not supportive of taking a school building offline and not, you know, closing it and repurposing it for another purpose. So if Jennings was to be used for the ECC, it would still be a school building that in the future, if we needed to reclaim it again for elementary school, we would not be facing some of the issues we now face with thinking about taking Oldfield back online as an elementary school, or Grassmere, which is not an option, because it's, you know, being used for elder housing and the Pilot House. But there are some, you know, just keeping it real here, there are some efficiencies that come with having one less elementary school. So I would want to ask staff for just what kind of savings that would be. I think that we should all be, you know, be thinking about that as we're looking at operating budgets and, you know, trying to balance the needs of the school district, as well as, as for other town bodies, the greater needs of the town. So that will be factoring in to my thinking also.
Yeah, if I may, if you've ever watched a Board of Finance meeting, we ask a lot of questions. And I'm telling you right now, if the Board of Ed came to us with one option, right, that would not go over well, you've got to have options. Some options are not as palatable as others. But you know what, sometimes these options are there to understand how bad they really are. So, they're there for a reason. Ms. Jacobson?
Sorry, I remember what my last point was. And also in terms of what Mrs. Maxine Canelli was telling about targeting, the Board didn't come up with what school as the one site. There was one, just look at ECC for one site as one of the possible scenarios, so Jennings being in that school came from the consultant, so it could have, that's just the one that they put in that scenario. So it wasn't like we said, put it at Jennings.
Now I know how to work this button. So just going back to what you said and what you just said, I know you didn't, I know the Board didn't choose Jennings to be put in this scenario, but why was Jennings put in this scenario?
Ms. Gerber?
Well, because we did ask Malina McBroom to come up with a scenario whereby the ECC was in one site. So if you are talking about that, you're looking at one of two different options. Either you're looking at one of our larger elementary schools, our 504 schools. You are basically going to carve out 200-plus children from that school and create an elementary school that has a maximum of two grades, two classes per grade, and then you will have the ECC in that site as well. Or you take one of our smaller elementary schools, of which there are two, Dwight and Jennings, and you create an ECC at that site. So, and that was the, we simply said one site for the ECC, and this was what Malina McBroom came up with. I'm assuming perhaps, and I don't think any of us asked at the time, that the rationale for it being Jennings was because it was centrally-located, so that when you have children who are being bused to the ECC, they're not going all the way up to Dwight, plus Dwight is not ADA compliant as well. So, but again, just for, that was kind of where we came from, and so if we want one ECC, because as far as I know, we've asked, and there is no other site anywhere that isn't an elementary school, those are the two options.
I think you've got some support behind you, maybe they'll ask your question. Please state your name when you come to the microphone, please, so I can at least call you by name.
You have to press down.
I'm a technologist, too, by the way. So my name's Dom, I live a little bit less than a half a mile away from Jennings. I'm a data guy. I sent the Board of Finance and the Board of Ed a presentation. Have you had a look at it? Alright, I've got, I've got some copies here, I printed, I printed, probably used up a whole tree.
And could you just make sure to write your name on the sheet? Thanks.
So, Mr. DePonte, I don't think you're gonna have ti, I have looked at your presentation, I don't think you're gonna have time to walk us through each and every slide?
High level. So, so basically, I watched the meeting where you presented January's capacity review that came in from Malone McBroom. I reviewed the deck. I also looked, I watched last month's presentation on redistricting options. I, I heard from many of you some concerns around the data. I analyzed the data, and I found discrepancies. So I'll highlight a few. They mentioned 11 developments. There's actually 15 developments that are in scope right now. So they're, they're underestimating new developments by seven. They also, if you look at the deck, you'll see that in January, they mention a factor, right? And numbers matter, right? You learn division in third-grade math, I think, probably in Jennings Elementary, some kids are learning it right now, right? So, so they discussed the factor, and so they have a study from Rutgers, and the study from Rutgers discusses the probability of student enrollment at a, in a rental, and they mentioned three different scenarios, a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom, right? One-bedrooms obviously have very low probability. I don't know if anyone here has lived in a one-bedroom as a student. I personally have, as a kid, I'm a single-parent son, so I have, but it's very low probability, right? Interestingly enough, when I talked to Jim Went at the zoning meeting, the zoning committee, he mentioned Fairchild Avenue, right? And he said, you know, almost none of the rentals have students in them, and he used that one as a prime example. So I asked, well, how many bedrooms are in each one of those units? And he said, they're one-bedroom and studio units. So then I asked, well, why would you factor that into your number, right? Why would you factor that into the number that you're saying, the actual impact of student enrollment on, from these developments, which are over 1,500 units, right? So he asked, he said that was a good observation, right? So what I did is I created a factor that's similar to what the Rutgers University study did for Pine Tree Apartments, trademark of Fairfield, and Fair, Fairchild Avenue, which is obviously zero, because there's no probability of a student being there. Pine Tree Lane, if you look at the student generation, it's 10%, because there's five students, actually, there's seven according to Jim Went, so that's, that's a higher probability than Malone McBroom gave. But if you look at it by the 20 units of multi-bedroom apartments, that's a 70% probability of students living in a multi-bedroom apartment, right? The same thing for trademark of Fairfield. Trademark of Fairfield's 20% multi-bedroom units, right? So if you look at that, sure, a .05 factor looks, looks pretty light, right? But if you factor in the multi-bedrooms, it's a 25% probability of a student being enrolled in trademark apartments, right? I look at potential student enrollment, and I do that at 100% forecast, right? And with all of the proposed developments, by the way, it took a lot of time to make this data, it's not available from the zoning meeting, the zoning committee, I asked the town, I asked Brenda, it was, it was not available anywhere. I had to look at Google, Fairfield Citizen, YouTube videos on Fairfield TV to get the data, and I got 617 multi-bedroom units in all the proposed developments.
So, Mr. DePonte, why don't you skip to Slide 11, which are your questions for the Board of Education?
It's important. It's important to highlight that with all of this data, it basically nullifies what Malina McBroom provided you. I've handed you my, my presentation, in my personal opinion, or my humble opinion. This data was used to make Holland Hill a 504 school, I think, right? And they had, I think they estimated 400 students enrolled in 2016, and there were actually 350 currently enrolled in Holland Hill. And there were actually 350 currently enrolled in Holland Hill, right? So this data is important. And that, and I want to make that very clear, that the way that Malone McBroom analyzes this data and gives it to you, you know, it's not just 23 students here and there. Obviously, it makes a difference because you're looking at Jennings and saying, oh, there's only 288 students, right? So, I just want to make that clear to the audience and, and to the board.
Why don't we throw it to the board now?
Yep.
Ms. Pitco?
I'm gonna try to adjust your questions on Page 11. I think I just said, you know, five years ago, when I was sitting on the audience, we were talking about redistricting. Well, it's ironic because five years ago, I got involved in politics because of 8-30G, when they were building Fairchild. And you asked the question, is now the right time to redistrict? It wasn't the right time to redistrict five years ago, but your second question says, when will Fairfield's rapid pace of development stop? We can't answer that. I, I hope for more businesses, but I, I honestly believe that we can't vote on the scenarios unless we're 100% sure that those current numbers, what we know at the time of our vote, those data enrollment, the projections are there.
But we all agree that the bullseye in Fairfield, based on the Transit Oriented Development Initiative, is in the McKinley School District. And if you get rid of Jennings, you basically lose all of your opportunity to move students from McKinley into any other schools. It's basically, it's literally a bullseye. If you go to the zoning committee's documentation, they have a bullseye around the McKinley School District for high-density housing. If you walk around, if you go to Tonx's Hill, all of the old, like 20-year-old garages are for sale. I think the marble business just sold on Black Rock Turnpike. High-density housing is coming to us, and we can't use bad data, because if we do, we're gonna, pardon my French, we're gonna be screwed.
Anyone else on the board? Mr. Peterson?
I wanted to thank you for this. This is actually, this is excellent. I really appreciate that. I may have. I did fortunately get a chance to read it earlier this afternoon, and I may have some specific questions that I hope I can follow up with you going forward. I just add a couple of things. I, I do think, again, everyone here at the, at the board table has driven around town and is seeing what's going on. And one of the reasons this is imperative to us now is because we do see it. And the development in town is taking place in school areas that are already overfilled. So that's a, that's a challenge that we're trying to address. It's a challenge we're trying to address when this board voted for a 504 size at Mill Hill. And we have a system that we need to work in, in now, and see, project it out, how is this gonna work? You're right that projections are projections. They're not, they're not exact. They will never be exact. And the question is, how, how exact are they? How, how much can we rely on them? I also want to just say that our, Mrs. Pitco, a couple of years back, asked Dr. Jones for enrollment information about the multifamily units that were in town. And I believe, unless I'm mistaken, we came up with a factor of .13 per apartment unit. I don't know, Trish, if you remember that, which is less than your factors, but seems like it's probably slightly greater than the, than the Rutgers data that you, that you included. Just to, just to put that out. This is a thing that, again, Mrs. Pitco has been looking at for quite some time.
Ms. Jacobson?
Well, I've been looking at it for a long time too, starting with a couple of years ago when I got on the board and walked into P&amp;Z and asked for permitting by zone, and they didn't track at that information. So, kind of, it's been something of mine that I've been watching for a long time. I think it's pretty unfortunate that we don't have a collaborative process between departments at this stance at this point. I think that that's been, and that is needed at this point. It was needed long ago, and it's needed going forward. So I'm hopeful that, under new leadership or new administration, that greater collaboration can happen. So that's number one. Number two, I agree that some of this data is incredibly flawed. Number three, it doesn't project, it only gives you a snapshot in time, like what's known right now. It doesn't include what's unknown going forward for the next year, five years, 10 years, whatnot. So you automatically have to know you're gonna need more room. Because at this clip, that's only right now. So that's not even year of implementation. These number, all of these scenarios are based on 1920 data, not 2022, 23 data. So it's inaccurate to begin with, and we know that. And it also didn't include CLCs and our specialized programming and all of that. So we knew that, if you watched the meeting, that some of this is not complete at this point. So, to everyone's point, we know that there is missing information that will need to be fixed before any type of real conversation and decision-making can happen. But in the broader scope of that, the broader issue is, how is a town and how is a community, are we working together on these issues rather than in siloed decision-making? And I'm hoping that everyone in this room is on that game plan, and that it's not just us, that we all advocate for greater collaboration now.
I agree.
Ms. Basukinelli?
Not to come back to the same point again, but I feel the need that when you say, you know, is now the right time to study redistricting, three out of our four scenarios that we are looking at involve, what are we doing with the ECC? And the redistricting is going to happen, most definitely, even if you took right now. The fact that we would be looking at needing to do this in order to accommodate which plan we pursue for the ECC, and that we're then not using that as an opportunity, but recognizing, do this once. Because that's one thing that I've heard loud and clear for now, going on nine years, of, let's look at this holistically. Let's not keep revisiting this. But once we make the ECC decision, then a lot of the other conversations will happen. I apologize, I saw that the email came today, and I've been at work all day. So I have not had a chance to look, and trying to look quickly right now is not the way to examine data. So I can't respond to the specifics that you say. I am heartened by what my fellow board members say, that obviously you've got something good here. And I've been following you on Facebook, so I knew this was coming. So I appreciate that. But in terms of is now the right time to study redistricting, if we move the ECC in certain of these scenarios, the answer is yes. We don't have a choice. We will be creating situations within our, our schools where the utilization rate is inappropriate. Now whether it involves Jennings or not, that's the separate issue. But three out of the four involve not the status quo right now, and all of which will then entail something subsequent to that. So, again, rapid pace of development, I have to agree. I'm hoping it's of a business nature. And then the other two, I can't, you know, answer just yet, because that really involves a data dive that I hadn't, didn't have time for. But I do appreciate, appreciate your putting this together.
No problem. Can I just make a point, because you asked about, ECC seems to be a priority, right? And I heard that the Dwight isn't ADA compliant. One suggestion I have is Bigelow. Why isn't the Bigelow Center being reviewed? It was a, I'm guessing if it's a senior center, it's ADA compliant. And is it being, is it being utilized?
I think that's a little bit out of the scope, and actually, I don't think it is ADA compliant, to be honest with you. I know the bathrooms aren't. Ms. Leeper?
I also say thank you for all this data. I always appreciate data. And I'm gonna echo some of the other things that were said. But I've heard a lot of people mention that they understand redistricting has been coming down the path, path for a long time, and that they, they won't be happy about it. No one's gonna be happy about it. But they can accept it if we're gonna solve racial imbalance once and for all. I've heard that from a lot of people. And I think it's really hard to say we can solve racial imbalance if we continue to put all of our diversified housing in our most diverse, diverse community. And I, I worry about, and I, we need to have these difficult discussions, there's no doubt about it. But I worry, we will be back here in 10 years. If we don't also all put some pressure on our town to get serious about coming up with a plan to look at how we can more creatively zone, so that this doesn't keep happening, that we have all of our diversified housing in our most diverse neighborhood, which continues to put the burden on our children, to solve what is effectively a segregated town. And I actually, I know we don't talk about that a lot, but I worry about having a segregated school and the continuation of potentially a segregated town. And I think that that is a broader discussion. If we don't have that discussion, we will be back here 10 years, in 10 years. And I think we owe it to the community, to be honest, about, about that. And I don't have a solution surely, but, but it's something that is certainly weighing on me.
And I agree. And I would even say, I, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I think Jennings, I think the Jennings community, I mean, we're the third most diverse school in the town already. And I don't think we have any concerns if you wanted to redistrict and bring more of that capacity into our school to make us a more diverse school. I, I could be wrong, but I personally don't care.
Thank you, Mr. DePonte. Gentlemen?
While these gentlemen are signing in, we're welcoming Mr. Asa. And Mrs. Maxine Cannelly joined us a little while ago, for the record.
Hey, gentlemen, just state your name before you speak.
Hi, I'm Tyler Balavender. My name's Nathan Balavender, and we live in 88 Home Fair Drive. And we are currently in eighth grade at Fairfield Woods Middle School. And we'll be heading to Fairfield Ward High School next year. These discussions will not impact us directly, but we do have two younger siblings, along with countless friends and neighbors, that would be impacted if you choose to keep Scenario 1 on the table. We understand that redistricting is not an easy task, and one that will leave people unhappy with any end result. But Scenario 1, the repurposing of Jennings as the ECC, will not only leave people unhappy, but it will dismantle a community. My parents talk about the high taxes that they pay and the reasons for moving only two streets, from high ridge to home fair, over often. And it always comes down to the community that they're able to raise us in. The ability to walk to school and to stay after school with friends or drama club, or do drama club or any other after-school activities, and be able to walk ourselves home. To have the opportunity to help my mom out when she's running late and go and get our siblings from Jennings. My parents chose to build a home within the walking distance to Jennings and Woods with the belief that neighborhood schools were focused in Fairfield, and that their investment would be protected by that focus as well. If you choose to repurpose Jennings, not only are you breaking apart our community, but you are increasing the cost to bus all of us to elementary and then, in some cases, middle schools. And we're also going to cause our houses to be worthless and directly impacts, and directly impact the tax revenue for our town. So we urge you to preserve the Jennings and Woods community and take Scenario 1 off the table. Thank you. And just for the record, that was not my words or his words. That was my mom. She should be getting all the applause. Just saying that now. Just saying that now.
Well, first off, gentlemen, I want to thank you for that very articulate, I don't care who wrote it, you did a very nice job presenting it. And clearly, you're passionate about it. In the audience, listen, I, I know you're very supportive of everyone here, but just to make sure we have enough time to hear everyone this evening, if you keep your applause a little bit down, but we, we understand. So I'll throw it to the board now. Who'd like to, would anyone like to address these young gentlemen? Mr. Peterson?
Thanks, thanks so much for coming up. Can I, can I ask how old you guys are?
Yeah, we're 13.
I, I really appreciate what it, what it takes to come up, especially in a room like this, even a friendly room, a friendly crowd, to, to, to say something like that. So I really, I really appreciate you coming here. These are decisions, as I've said earlier, that we're taking extremely seriously and looking at from a wide array of angles. And I would just like to say, for the sake of your younger brothers, and my fellow board members are sick of hearing this, but I lived this in the 1980s. My school was closed. I got closed out of Osborne Hill, to which I was a Walker, and I got bused to Jennings. And I, I keep those memories in mind as we go through these things, that, that not only are we trying to solve something that appears on a spreadsheet, but something that's actually gonna impact lives of children and families. But I just want, I want to assure you that everyone at this table takes those things in consideration.
Thank you. We understand it's not an easy choice. Like, I, I wouldn't want to be there making this choice, because no matter what, people are gonna be upset with you. Like, there's no, there's no really right, like, right decision. Someone's gonna get affected. Yeah.
You are correct.
I, I think one of these guys is gonna take over my spot on the Board of Finance in a couple of years. So I'm watching my back in the future.
We hope not anytime soon.
Ms. Pitco?
Thank you very much, gentlemen. I know that's not easy to do. I just want to add that I think that every single one of us has children in the school district. And I want everyone to know that no matter what decision, my daughter gets redistricted too. And every single scenario, she gets moved out of the McKinley District, which is where I went to elementary school. So I have to consider that as well. I'm sure some of the fellow board members have to think of that too. So we, we do take it personally, but we, we're trying to do the best for the students. That's the, the ultimate thing in whatever decision we come up with.
Great. Well, thank you, gentlemen, very much for your time.
Thank you.
Representative Farnin, good evening.
Oh, you're really making me work here. My name is Brian Farnin. I am a parent of two children at Sherman Elementary. I am on the Fairfield PTA Council and a member of the Connecticut State Legislature. I'm here tonight because I believe the top priority of any plan should be to optimize our children's well-being, both academically and emotionally. To that end, I believe your guiding principle should be minimum disruption for our children, while also aiming to optimize and protect the special education needs in our town. School redistricting, forced school moves are damaging to children. Multiple studies have found school mobility, defined simply as changing schools once, produces academic declines. School changes that come about by externally-driven factors, such as those imposed by redistricting, hurt all groups of students, with minority students, low to moderate-income students, and students receiving special education services most affected. Multiple studies have further reported negative psychological consequences following school changes, specifically higher anxiety, more social withdrawal, higher level of behavioral problems, and lower peer acceptance. Additionally, a principle of minimum bus rides, i.e. less than 20 minutes, should be retained, and in no case should a Walker be redistricted to ride a bus. Fairfield has done an extraordinary job in creating a first-class education system for all of its children. I know you guys don't have easy decisions to make here, but I just ask that one of your guiding, the guiding principle really should be minimal, minimum disruption for our kids. Let's do what's best for our kids. That should be our guiding principle. Thank you.
Ms. Jacobson?
Good evening. Hi, thanks for coming up. I want to ask you a question at this point that we've struggled with, and I think the community has now begun to realize, and that there are, now that you're in the General Assembly, there is conflicting statute here that's causing a lot of these issues. The racial imbalance law is antagonistic to 830G, as they are both currently written. Is it working? Is it working now? Okay. So, what are your thoughts on how those two priorities that are important, they're both important, but somehow the solutions at this point are being, and how they're being implemented has proven to be a challenge for not only Fairfield, but other communities as well? So, do you have any thoughts on that at this point right now?
I think with both racial imbalance and 830G, they're very well-intended laws that are kind of a one-size-fits-all approach. I think they need to be changed. I don't see that happening in the, in the near term, definitely not this session, being a short session. I think there's a lot of concern, especially from urban legislators, of potential watering down of those statutes. And because of that, I don't think they're going to budge. You look at, for me, when it comes to McKinley, for example, if that was a lower-performing school, I would say, yes, something has to change immediately. But the fact that that's a neighborhood school with support, with language support and things like that, you know, I would push the system a little bit and minimize taking into account that state statute. into account that state statute, and push the boundaries a little bit, because I think the principle of minimum disruption is much more important than meeting a, you know, these other competing needs that I don't think meet the best needs of our children.
Thank you for the answer, and just one more comment, I'll let other people speak. I understand that what you referred to as terms of concerns, just to be clear, I don't think there's been a lot of advocacy of Fairfield being welcoming to more housing and affordable housing, that it's not a dilution of amount necessarily, but concentration of location, and that there isn't a concentration provision, which doesn't help us with the other issues that we're facing. So just leaving you with that thought, and...
For me, I think, especially when it comes to affordable housing, which I think we need to encourage, I look at the Metro Center and Fairfield Center as the areas where we really need to focus on. I think some of the other developments, especially there in residential neighborhoods, are not ideal. And I think if we could, you know, look to areas that are close to transportation, and mass transportation in particular, would be a guiding principle. When you look at, the problem with 830G is that developers often take advantage of those statutes to get developments that would otherwise not be approved. I think we need, as a town, just do a better job from a strategic purpose, to put them near areas where there's mass transportation, and that's why I think the Metro Center, for example, is an area we really need to be focused on.
All right, just Metro Center is there at this point, McKinley, so that's...
It is, but, I mean, it also makes sense to have it there for other reasons, though. Yeah. Yeah.
Ms. Maximinelli?
Representative Farnin, you said if McKinley is a lower-performing school, then we need to do something about it. It is.
I mean, I've looked at the ratings of the school, I think it's a pretty good school.
McKinley is an outstanding school. Statistically speaking, it is, in terms of score reports, as is entirely predicted by the socioeconomic base, it is the lowest-performing school. So by your metric, that is exactly one of the reasons why we need to look at redistricting. So again, my focus tonight has been on the ECC as being a primary driver of this, but by your own criterion, that is something that we also should be considering. And I do, in fact, think it is going to be part of our dialogue here today. But I'll just leave it at that.
Ms. Vitale?
Taking the racial imbalance out of the equation, based on the tenure projections we received from McKinley, it has enrollment there of 493 students. You just have said, and the way the development is going, it looks like there is going to be possibly even more students at that school, which makes the argument that we may need to redistrict, simply because of utilization. Just to put it out there, I mean, we talk about racial imbalance, but just for utilization, and it comes to a bigger issue, which Ms. Pitko and many members of this board have said, that if we focus all of our development, if our diversified housing is going to be by Fairfield Metro, we're going to have problems with enrollment. So I think that, and just, and Mr. Asa can attest to this, in terms of pushing back, the State Board of Education, I feel, thinks that we have been pushing back for a decade on this, and they are really expecting us to take some action. I think appreciating that we are facing competing statutes, and that some of the problems that we are trying to solve are outside of our purview, because it is driven by where development is of diversified housing.
I just think we're a long way off from those developments occurring in Metro Center and in the near term. When you look at the potential of what's occurring at Jennings, or Sherman, with Walkers no longer being allowed to be Walkers, or breaking up historic districts, I just believe that moving children to different schools is psychologically damaging. And if we could do it in a way that creates the least amount of disruption, I think that is beneficial. That's why I'm here tonight. So it's, I know you guys have no easy choices here, people are going to be upset. I am here, my public comment is focused on the fact that I would ask that minimum disruption be the guiding principle. It shouldn't be controversial.
Ms. Gerber?
Well, just to get to your point about the minimum amount of disruption, I'm assuming you've looked at these plans?
Correct.
So basically, they all are far from minimum disruption. You know, Plan 2 has students going from Stratfield to North Stratfield, Jennings to McKinley, Stratfield to McKinley, McKinley to Stratfield, Holland Hill to McKinley, McKinley to Holland Hill, Holland Hill to Sherman, Osborne Hill to Holland Hill, Sherman to Riverfield. I mean, around the horn, we're moving students all over the place. And that is in part because, while we have some schools that are overutilized, and some schools that are underutilized, they're not in the right places. So to, unless you're going to be busing somebody all the way across town, you're going to have to go around the horn, and move this group from there, and that group from there, to get around there. So quite honestly, I mean, I don't like any of these plans, and I'm very hesitant to go down this redistricting road, based on where we will be in the future, where we've been in the past. But that said, there really is no way to come up with a plan, and I'm not saying I like any of them, that isn't going to cause massive disruption, because of where our schools are, and where our students are, and the student populations. I mean, that's just the way it's going to be, unfortunately, if any of these plans are, come to pass. It's just, we don't have any location. I mean, to be honest, the one that costs the least amount of disruption is closing Jennings, because those are taking larger groups. And again, I am not saying I support that at all, just to be clear, but I'm just saying that all of 2, 3, and 4 are moving enormous groups of students all over the place, and impacting the middle school, and impacting the high school. So, I mean, this is a trickle, down or up, or whatever you want to call it, that's going to impact many people who probably are at home right now, thinking, oh, there's no way my kid's going to be impacted, because, you know, we live X, Y, or Z places. So it's just, but again, that's the nature of where our schools are, what our populations are. And I really don't know what the answer is, but I did just want to address your point about saying minimum disruption. I don't see how any plan cannot cause maximum disruption, to be quite honest with you, based on where our populations are, and where our schools are. And that doesn't make me happy in the least, so.
Thank you. Probably get these guys home, so... Oh, you have another kid?
Oh, Mr. Peterson, sure.
As long as Chad allows it. Chad, one more question? No? All right, we'll give you one more.
I'll be brief. I was going to pretty much say what Mrs. Gerber said, that if we're trying to balance, if trying to have minimum disruption and optimize the ECC, I think those, it's possible those are mutually exclusive. And that we have to accept the possibility that, after having been talking about this for two years about the ECC, that if it were easy, we would have done it already. To the other point about make it small, make it minimum, not to go back to my well about when I was redistricted, I, about half of Osborne Hill, when I, in 1981, went to Jennings. And that was a cushion for me, because I had a lot of people that I knew there. Smaller groups went to Dwight, smaller groups went to Riverfield. My wife got closed out of Old Field School, and she was one of seven people to go from Old Field to Riverfield. And her experience was significantly different than mine, because she did not have that cushion. I worry that if we go down a too-minimal pocket redistricting option, not only will we not solve the problem for a long period of time, but we will have psychological impacts, the exact sort of thing that you're talking about, that may be mitigated by a larger move that is shared townwide.
Ms. Maximinelli?
Just one quick point, and I completely respect that somebody has school tomorrow. So the only other thing I would say about the, I mean, no one's looking to do a disruption, but if we're committed to it, it starts with what we have to, as a board, establish as a foundation, is that there's an educational purpose to be fulfilled by doing this. And once we fulfill that, I think we are remiss, because code for minimum disruption is NIMBY. Do it to somebody else, not myself. And I, and it's, and I'm not saying that, Ms. Farnin, I'm not saying that that's what was intended, but this idea of if there's an educational reason, because if we can't make the case that there is an educational benefit to this, then we shouldn't be doing it at all. So it starts with, we have to do the work of that establishment. But, you know, to Mr. Peterson's point, are larger groups educationally beneficial, as opposed to smaller groups? If that were the case, then that's going against the minor disruption. If they're, you know, whatever we decide for the ECC, whatever we decide, you know, when we take into account these additional developments, but to take into account, just don't touch us, do as little as possible, don't let it touch me, is something that I don't think we can have as the guiding principle. I think that will blind us to what needs to be done. And again, if we don't make the educational case for it, then I don't think we should be taking any action whatsoever. So there's more work still to be done, and more conversation to be had, but that was just one point I wanted to raise.
Fair point. And I do want to just add, none of these scenarios would impact me from any situation. Our kids are so close to Sherman, it's not an issue. I just believe that this minimum disruption approach is helpful, because I do think that school moves do hurt kids, and I just wanted to, that's why I'm here today.
Okay. Well, I think that was a good wrap-up by Ms. Maximinelli. Thank you, Mr. Farnin. Someone else like to come forward? Yes, young lady? Oh, you're going home with Dad, sorry. Please state your name and sign in, please?
The whole time?
Press the button and hold it the whole time. We do it on purpose, so you don't stay up here too long.
Fair enough. Robert LaMonica, 138 Woodbridge Avenue. Couple things, last time I was here to discuss this with you, I mentioned the fact that 226 is anathema to modern education, and I hate to be the one to say it, but to suggest that minority students can't learn as well if they're not surrounded by students that look like my children, I think is totally contrary to what we should be teaching our children today. And to say that they have to move school districts and change their lives to accommodate something that is no longer true, that racial minorities can't learn unless they're surrounded by white students, I think is offensive. It offends me, and I think it should offend all of you from an educational perspective. I think I mentioned on this point, power of the purse strings. The State Board of Education, as I understand it, pays very little of our education budget in this town. I didn't see anything in the statute that allows them, under 226, to withhold funds. Even if they do, it's a microscopic part of our budget, so why do we care? Next point I would raise is that, I looked at all of the scenarios, the global redistricting plans all require hundreds of students to move. I looked at the McKinley numbers, there are 437 students at McKinley now, there are, excuse me, 437, 243 minority. You move 100 of those students, you now have a school that has 143 minority out of 337. That gets you down to 41%, which is within the 15% of the 25.6% of the town's average. So now we're talking about moving 100 students out of one district, or one racially imbalanced part of town, versus moving hundreds of students across the entire town. Now, I didn't see anything in the statute that requires school districts to be contiguous. Racial imbalance doesn't require contiguousness. So why, unless one of you tell me otherwise, I don't see why we can't have a new district buried in, or five new districts for five of the elementary schools, buried in a racially imbalanced area, to move those children to where they need to be. If it's so important that racial minorities be mixed in with everybody else, which I'm not saying is bad, but I'm not saying is necessary as a matter of educational principle, then why don't we just excise the problem and deal with it directly, rather than trying to broadly just gloss over the entire thing? If it's a matter of utilization, then we can move the children who need to be moved to those places. Now, I understand we've already offered them the opportunity to choose any district or any school they want in town, nobody takes us up on that. Perhaps there are financial incentives, perhaps there are tax abatements that can be put in place to get people to want to use different schools in our community.
Okay. Would anyone on the board, Mr. Asa?
So to your point about the State Board, and their potential punitive measures, or financial sanctions, if you want to call them, against the town, yeah, you're correct in the fact that we're not getting a tremendous amount of money. However, one thing that has been talked about is our state reimbursements for our building projects. And it has been made very clear that the intent would likely be to go after that, and that could potentially be millions of dollars. I'm not going to argue with some of the points you've made, but the bottom line is, it was discussed with the previous speaker here, there doesn't seem to be a will of the legislature to make any change here. And we're talking about three districts in the state that have this problem, three or four districts that have this problem. So what is the feeling that representatives from the, every other district are going to take on a statute that doesn't affect them or their constituents? So the idea that I think we're going to get this law changed is a dream. That being said, when Mrs. Vitale and myself and Mr. Cummings went to the State Board recently, their patience is getting very thin with us. And what does that mean? It means that they're tired of seeing us kick the can down the road. And they plan, there were many, many members at that table that made it clear that they're not going to deal with this much longer, and they will take actions. What those actions are, I don't know, but it could be coming and forcing our hand to move students. What, my thrust of this whole discussion has been all along, what many other members is, is utilizing our facilities efficiently, and getting the most educational value for our children, and bang for our buck with our facilities. We have facilities issues, we have schools that are underutilized. When you look at some of these projections, and you see some schools way under, and some close to 100% or over 90%, it really, to Mrs. Maximinelli's point, I think we do need to look at the educational value of balancing our facilities. And to me, that's an important thing, and an exercise that we're going through. No one at this table, I don't believe, at least myself, hasn't made any decisions ahead of time. I'm very happy to have received this data, so we can actually have these meaningful discussions. I appreciate you coming up here and sharing your thoughts, but I just wanted to make those couple comments.
Ms. Maximinelli?
I know this is my third time saying this, but it bears repeating, that's one thing that has made this year different from all of our past discussions of the racial imbalance, and do we redistrict or not, is the ECC issue. This is, that's a component you did not even reference when it came to moving students hereabouts, and solving a utilization issue, or racial imbalance issue. You didn't reference the ECC at all, and that's something we aren't, we can't ignore, that that is a very real issue. We've come up with a Band-Aid that is going to work for a few years, and it's barely going to work, I believe, for those few years. It's already bursting with what we tried to do to solve it this year. That's not some, talk about an educational impact. These are three-to-five-year-olds, at the most tender point of their education, where we address it well, and we are talking about exiting them possibly from special ed, or certainly having more minimal modifications, or whatever adjustments they need to their academic lives. But we don't address it well, there's educational impact that's going to go on for years. So this ECC issue is of paramount importance to me, and I know to my fellow board members, and that is a very integral part of this conversation, that no part of this can be done in isolation, but for me, that's the one we have to have first, and which we'll be having on Tuesday.
Okay. Ms. Rotelli?
Hi, thank you for, is that working? Thank you for coming. I'm just going to echo what Mr. Asa and Ms. Maximinelli said, and let you know, I believe that meeting up at the state, with the state, was right after the election. And I remember watching it, it was the day after, or the day after. I remember watching it, because I came on as a new board member, really thinking, oh, we can push back at the state. And watching that meeting was very eye-opening to me. I mean, they really were extremely serious, and have no patience. This conversation's been going on for a very, very long time, and they want a solution, and they want it quickly. Not that you don't have very valid points, I agree with a lot of what you said, but I also agree with everything that Mr. Asa and Ms. Maximinelli are discussing, and the ECC is just as big a part of this as the racial imbalance.
Ms. Leeper?
I just want to say that in no way does integration say minority children cannot learn unless they're next to white children, and I want to be really clear about that. And the data around integration shows improved student outcomes for all children. And it certainly does not say minority children cannot thrive unless they're surrounded by white children. We are solving... We are solving many, many issues in, or trying to, and they're all very serious and racial imbalance is just one of those. And looking at the student outcomes for all of our children is extremely important. I'll just leave it at that.
Ms. Pitkow?
Kind of repeating what they're saying, but I want to make the point first, thanks for coming up and speaking. If we were going to redistrict solely based on racial imbalance, we would have done it by now. We have gotten to this point because of the ECC growing out of its space. We've gotten to this point because of the utilization of our elementary schools. We pushed this along for years and we've come to a point where we have to do something. That's basically what I'm getting at here.
Go to Ms. Lamont.
I'm sorry, I don't have the ECC numbers in front of me. How many students are we talking about?
Go to this Maxim Cunelli.
It's actually easier to reference it by classrooms. At this point, it's 10 classrooms, five of which are in the current Ward ECC setup, or six of them, six of them are at the ECC setup, four of which are at Stratfield. So it's, the numbers are lower than obviously our regular elementary school classrooms.
How many people?
I think it's, what, 175 at the moment and increasing every day.
Yeah, and it's important to remember, I don't know, Jerian, what do you think? 175, 180? And it's, and it's a rolling enrollment. So as kids come in from birth to three, you really can't predict those numbers. Those numbers will grow as the year goes on, so the classes will get bigger and bigger.
I don't think I saw any redistricting plan that affects less than 175 students. And as regards utilization, if the schools are underutilized, why isn't ECC distributed among the schools?
Ms. Gerber?
We've had many, many lengthy discussions about this and you could go back and watch some of them or look at the information. This all came out of the fact that at one point, when Dr. Jones was still superintendent, there was some discussion about having ECC sections at all of the elementary schools. And the ECC community, the staff, the parents were very, very vocal, very, very passionate in saying that that was absolutely not the model that was optimal for this program, that it has been one site for many years now and one of the valuable aspects of the program is the fact that it is in one site. And since some classrooms have had to have been moved to Stratfield, there has been commentary from some parents and some staff saying that that is not optimal and that truly one site is absolutely the only answer to continuing to provide the program that the ECC provides. So that's been the discussion that has taken place at this table, which is why that drove us to request one scenario whereby there is going to be one location for the ECC. If you look at the other two, three, and four, the ECC program will be at a couple of different places. So, but basically, there was a huge pushback when the hypothetical idea of having multiple ECC sites throughout the district came up. And so that was kind of shelved at the time as being not tenable for a number of reasons that we heard from both teachers, staff, parents.
Ms. Maxim Cunelli?
Yeah, and so, and if you look at the presentation regarding the elementary school, your question, that's actually a great question because one thing that we know that we're going to have to do as a board is a constant reeducation on where we have been because you're not expected to be paying attention to all, every meeting, each meeting and all that we're covering. But exactly to your question, sir, that's what drove the four different scenarios. It starts and ends with where, what is, what are we doing with the ECC? So one is one location. The second option is a maintaining of the status quo where we're using Ward and Stratfield. Then you go to stat, to number four, which is using three sites, exactly to your point of trying different ways to address it. But that's how, that's why our first discussion and also to the public who have asked about street numbers, that, street names, that's why the streets are irrelevant at this point. It is not irrelevant to parents. But to us at the board at the macro level, we first have to decide philosophically what is going to be our approach with what we do with the ECC, then we bear down on the details beneath that. So to your point about the 175 students, that's exactly what we're looking at through these scenarios, is how, what is going to be our approach to serving those children. Again, as Mrs. Gerber said, we had, didn't, we're not of interest in putting one in each school. We did not think that was a very good or effective model. But do we do it all in one site? Do we do it in two sites, one of which is Ward? Do we do it in two elementary schools? Do we do it in two elementary schools and Ward? That's the genesis of the four different scenarios that you see.
Ms. Vitale, I think it's time to call, that's when you're done.
And just in terms of the Early Childhood Center, I think it's important to remember that we're taught, this is a preschool for children who have identified disability as well as just three and four-year-olds who are attending school. The Fairfield Public School has a preschool curriculum. We are really trying to build our preschool program and encourage paying customers to come to our preschool, so we need to factor that in in terms of growth. Ideally, we want to have class size, 50% of the class will be students with disabilities and 50% will not be students with disabilities. As mentioned earlier by Ms. Mitchell, that we are not at that ratio right now. So staff has given us some projections that the ECC could grow to be 300 children in the next, you know, decade.
Okay, I'm going to call this, thank you very much. Someone else like to speak? Thank you, what's your name?
I can't do two things at once, let me write, hold on.
Okay. I can't either.
Hi, my name's Liz Delavolpe. I'm the proud parent of a sixth-grade Jennings graduate, shoved myself into his shirt tonight, and a current parent of a Jennings second grader. I'm also the proud parent of 57 other Jennings sixth-grade graduates and 38 other second graders because we are family at Jennings. When I'm not parenting, I'm educating, which sometimes mirrors parenting. I've been an educator for 22 years. The evolution of data-driven decisions and instruction has changed the culture of how we do business in education from the classroom level to the state level. You've been presented with data in order to develop a plan that best meets the needs of the students in Fairfield Public Schools. It's a daunting, challenging job and you have my respect for undertaking this most important work. I'm grateful that we've been provided with this opportunity to be part of the process. I'd like to raise a caution flag about focusing solely on data. Greenwich Public Schools developed their racial balance plan in July of 2014. By the 2019-2020 school year, both Hamilton Avenue and New Lebanon Schools were back on the state racially imbalanced list. The data didn't predict the change in demographics in a particular catchment area. Data doesn't capture humanity and education is a human business. For elementary educators, it's the business of getting our little humans ready for life. What does that look like? During a read-aloud designed to target figurative language, the teacher is also tying shoes, urging Johnny to go to the bathroom, and reminding Sally and Jenny to use their words before they start poking each other because someone's in someone else's space. That teacher is also making a mental list of what he or she needs to do after school. Call Johnny's mom to share that he used the bathroom successfully. Fill out a proud board sheet for Sally and Jenny for using their words. And email the special area staff to let them know that Jack got glasses and may need support the next few days. How do I know this? Because this is what Mrs. O'Connor, Mrs. Jacobs, sorry, Mrs. Roget, Mrs. Gibbs, Mrs. Lewin, and Mrs. Rodriguez have done for my kids. Our Jennings school culture is about people, not programs. It's about how we treat each other. It's about sharing experiences and developing relationships. For the approximately 242 Jennings families, it is our community and family. This is not a data point captured in the strategic school profile or the enrollment projectives. It's not reflected in building utilization rates or racial imbalance statistics. It's reflected inside Jennings School. It's reflected in the little humans and their families that Jennings is part of raising. It's reflected in the social, emotional well-being of my children, which matters to me above all else. It is as important as any of the data points you are reviewing. It is my opinion that it's not in the best interest of our Fairfield Public Schools community at large to repurpose Jennings School. Jennings Elementary School should remain Jennings Elementary School.
Thank you, Ms. Delavolpe. Ms. Maxim Cunelli? Did you want to? I just assumed, I just assumed you were going to give your ECC speech. Ms. Leeper?
I was, thank you. That was beautiful. And I just want to say, this is sort of tangential, but I had the privilege to be inside Jennings School today for your fifth-grade invention convention and I got to feel all of those things that you just described. And I feel for the Jennings community because I feel like we had the same conversation many late meetings last year. And I still share many of the opinions and concerns I had last year about the same topic. And we will, none of these scenarios are desirable, but I do worry about what closing an elementary school does to this district really long-term. I, we're not here to vote on any of that, but I certainly feel for, for your school community and I was thankful to be able to enjoy an afternoon at Jennings today.
Thank you.
Ms. Vitale?
Thank you. I echo a lot of what Ms. Leeper says and I'll be visiting Jennings, actually many board members will be visiting Jennings in the next week or so. And in terms of the board's approach, I, I'm sorry that you're sitting here again because you have gone through many scenarios that either had Jennings repurposed or Jennings closed and things were taken off the table and it's back on again. So in terms of the board's approach, for our next meeting on Tuesday, we are going to be discussing Scenario One. Going to try to get action on this as quickly as we possibly can. I can't say that we're going to be taking action next Tuesday, but that is going to be, being that it is somewhat different than the other three scenarios, that will be our focus. I'll be asking, but we'll continue this discussion at the board level, you know, not every question may be answered, but just really diving down, seeing what other information that we need in order to make a decision. We do, we don't want to string you along, I am sorry that you are here. We are going to, we do not take this decision lightly and we're going to try to be as thoughtful as we can be, as quickly as we can be.
Can I just ask you, does that mean on Tuesday, it will either be taken off the table or be?
It will not be. We're going to discuss it, we will not be taking action. So for those of you who want to come for, you know, public comment, we're not going to be taking action. I think that, I can speak for everyone, that we understand that this is not something that you support. Our meeting on Tuesday, the agenda is very full. If you want to come and give public comment, you are of course welcome to, but I don't want you to feel that if you don't, we won't appreciate where you're coming from or that something will happen at that meeting that you will have missed because there will be no action taken.
Ms. Gerber?
Yeah, thank you very much. And one of the reasons why I'm sitting here today is because for years, my children's elementary school, which was Osborne Hill, was constantly under the same type of scrutiny in different scenarios that Jennings is. At one point, it was going to be the Mills Ball, Mill Plain neighborhood that was going to go to Dwight. Another time, they maybe were going to Riverfield. Then there was another neighborhood that was going to go to Holland Hill. One year, they were thinking about perhaps either kindergarten or first grade, kindergarten or fifth grade going to Burr for a year. You can only imagine the consternation that caused in the school. So each year, we were kind of girding up, you know, like what now, what now? And the entire time my kids were there, there were 530, 40, 50 students. There are now about, I think like 410 students at Osborne Hill. So if they, we had moved, if they had moved 100 students, 150 students, as were some of these plans, there'd be tumbleweeds going through that building right now. Enrollment is cyclical and things change and, and so I am very hesitant, you know, and a lot of these scenarios are things that I've seen in different permutations with different school communities over the years, having been a volunteer on a task force for redistricting, having been on the board for eight years. So I, I am very hesitant at many of these things, knowing how things change and enrollment changes and different schools become higher or lower in population. And so I, I absolutely feel your pain, I feel the Jennings community's pain and I, I hope that we can move towards deciding, or at least trying to get some things off the table. I will say that I am very, very leery of the thought of closing any elementary school, but, you know, I'm one of nine and, you know, and again, these plans, we all have a lot of questions about them, we need more answers. But I'm purely from a historical perspective, knowing how bad some of the decisions have come back to bite us in the past with closing schools. I think closing a school now, especially a centrally located school, especially in a part of town where there is going to be building taking place, makes me very, very concerned and very, very uncomfortable. So I look forward to having more decisions and I do hope that, having been in your shoes for many years, I absolutely hope that we can come to some sort of moving forward decision as a board to put people's minds at rest or at least let them know where we are going so that we don't have to keep having these discussions again. But I do thank you and I thank everybody.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, the reason I say I don't think it's in anybody's best interest in our community at large is because any parent from any elementary school could be sitting here saying what I'm saying, they feel that way about their school cultures and communities as well.
Ms. Teresa?
I just want to make one comment, not specific to Jennings, this would, what I would be saying, Scenario One where any other school too, is that there's being, there's, there's two words being thrown out there and I think it's very important to, to understand the difference between closing a school and repurposing a school. Closing a school is closing a school, right? That's closing a school, taking it offline, like Oldfield School is now the senior center and a child's garden. It is a town building. When I think about repurposing a school, I'm thinking about keeping it in our inventory. So as we've discussed and many board members have said, things change. A decade from now, yes, we may be back at this table talking about similar problems. I can't predict the future. But the difference between closing and repurposing means that that school would still be in our Fairfield Public School system. It would be being used for a different purpose. But if that school had to come back online for another different purpose, it's a very different scenario than when you close a school and turn it over to the town and it's used for something else. That school would be maintained, it would be kept up to date, it would be renovated in a couple of years. So in theory, that building 10 years from now would be able to be used for a school if it were an elementary or whatever type of purpose it is. So I just think it's very important to state that Scenario One is talking about repurposing a school and keeping it in the Fairfield Public School inventory, not closing a school. Again, I'm not speaking specific to the, to your Jennings School, I'm just saying in general, I think it's important that we have that description clarified.
Thanks. The language I used in my statement was repurpose. As an educator, I'm aware of, of that and everything that you've just described. To my daughter, her school is closing. When in fifth grade, she will be moved to another school, she will not understand the point of the repurpose. My point is that you value social, emotional health as well as whatever data points you're tracking and that in the data points you're tracking, you recognize there are other districts in the state who followed their data points and still got it wrong.
Ms. Jacobson?
I just wanted to do a follow-up comment to Mr. Asa's comment. As many of you may know or may not know, that Jennings has been on the waterfall for quite some time, waiting for their renovation. Not an addition, but a renovation and that's coming up in a couple of years. But it was stated previously that if it were to be repurposed, that would look different than renovating it for an elementary school. And what that looks like, we don't know at this point, we don't have any of that at this point, but having a Board of Finance member here is helpful in that you can repurpose something and we would be asking for an investment in order to do that. To change it back again would be another possible cost again. So there is a lot to factor into those types of decisions. You're, you're keeping it open and you're keeping it in inventory, but how, how things get built up may look differently. And that becomes an investment. And there has been investment in multiple sites in that area, so it's just another consideration.
Ms. Gerber?
Well, I did use the word close. So, and just to clarify that, you know, we did close Mill Hill, we did close Osborne Hill in the 80s and to reopen them, we spent $3.2 million to reopen Mill Hill in 1990 and $4.5 million in 1996 to reopen. million to reopen Mill Hill in 1990, and $4.5 million in 1996 to reopen Osborne Hill. And those really didn't have a tremendous amount of work done on them. I mean, they were basically closed, and just to get them back up to code costs that much. Now granted, if we are turning any school into a pre-K, I'm assuming that the code aspect wouldn't be an issue. But obviously, if we are turning an elementary school into a pre-K, there would be differences in the layout of the school. And again, you know, if we have a school that has a capacity of 378, and there are, say, 200 ECC students in it, I'm assuming we would have to figure out something else to do with that additional space, to try to be fiscally responsible. So that also could play a role if, again, we are switching it back to an elementary school. So there are costs associated with it. But yes, no, we would not be doing what we did with Grassmere or with Oldfield. But, you know, I mean, those other, Osborne Hill and Mill Hill were closed for all intents and purposes as elementary schools, and then cost a tremendous amount of money to reopen a few years later, so.
Ms. Maxim Caneli?
At you, the point I was going to make, you already alluded to, which I enormously appreciate that you said it, which is the idea that what you're saying about Jennings is what someone would say from each of our PTAs about their schools, right up through the high school, that each school feels that way. And I'm only bringing this up because I think that's a very, very important tone. I know I will be reiterating it endlessly, this reminder that the idea of the impact on the social emotional learning of our children, it starts with the parents setting the tone. And I'm not saying that to lecture. It's simply the reminder that because even if we talk about, say, if Scenario 1 gets put aside, and we focus on whichever one of the other three, if we do, again, first, we have to make the educational case. But if we do, just looking at them, Scenario 2, and this is even assuming we stuck literally to what's in this plan, you still have 25 Jennings students going to Burr. You have 26 going to McKinley. You're welcoming 67 from Burr. And so the language that we use, what I fervently believe, that if we end up pursuing something, that our PTAs will be an incredible force for good in welcoming these new students, and creating that environment. That's the one advantage, that we're not doing this exactly as an emergency measure, that we're going to have lead time, which is why we ultimately, I think we would be remiss if we dragged our feet, if we're going to go with it, so that PTAs have as much lead time as possible to create that welcoming environment, no matter where they go. Because that's one thing that I do believe. I believe our PTAs are an incredible force for good. And what they would be able to do with this, again, you know, Scenario 3, 20 students would be going to McKinley. 49 would be welcomed from McKinley. 15 would be going to Burr. I mean, these are all real students that, so that's where I'm loathe to, you know, hang my hat on one school community, because this is going to be a process, if we do it, that's going to be the whole town coming together, and making this as positive experience as it can be. And I just think that's an important tone set. And again, I do appreciate that you're the one who started with your comment to set that tone.
Thank you. I appreciate your reaction to it. I would submit, though, that a redistrict, with your own school still alive and functioning as a school, is different than being removed from your school, driving by it, and knowing other kids are there for a different purpose. So I think about the Bala Vender boys, talking about being able to walk across the street and pick up their sibling. The culture of that school would be taken from an entire population. Redistrict is different. I can still drive by Jennings with my daughter, and we can wave to Jennings. We can see our friends. We can see Mr. Volo. We can see the teachers. As an educator, I would welcome anybody who was redistricted into my school. But when a school is repurposed to a child, that's mourning a loss. You're not there anymore. Somebody else is there. Life is going on without you. Kids could think, what did I do for this to happen? There's other kids there. It's, I think a redistrict is very different than repurposing a school and taking an entire population from one school.
I would just say, conversely, that same child watching that school be, that they were redistricted from, and saying, why wasn't I one of the ones who got to stay behind? Why am I the one that has to go? So I do think your point could be turned right on its head. And again, but it starts with the adults. And I do believe that if anything is pursued, I have faith in the Fairfield community to set the positive tone for this.
Thank you, Ms. Maxim Caneli. Thank you, Ms. Delvoppi. Someone else like to speak? Hi, what's your name?
Hi, my name is Adrian Hoffman. I live at 176 Home Fair Drive. You've been presented with a lot of great data and information, and a tremendous amount of work that's been done by the Jennings family. I'm here to talk to you a little bit more personally. I'm an alumni of the Fairfield School System, Straffield School. Four years ago, my young daughter was diagnosed with a rare disease, which started the pathway to find a fair and appropriate education for her. We lived in a different district, of which I won't talk about, but it resulted in us having to hire an attorney to make sure that she was serviced with the needs, to get the basic requirements of an education. For two years, my husband and I drove down Home Fair Drive, waiting for a house to go on the market, so that we could get into this school system, because of the reputation of Mr. Volo, the educators there, and the community of Jennings School. I have two children, my seven-year-old son and my five-year-old daughter. And they're both thriving at the school system. My daughter is also an alumni of the ECC program, of which I am forever in gratitude for. So I can understand the dilemma, and I have such appreciation for the community as a whole. Because it wasn't until we moved to Fairfield that we finally got the services that she needed. So I really just want to say that from a, as a mother, to have my daughter in Jennings School has been a gift. They have gone over every possible scenario to afford her every opportunity to thrive, both academically and also socially. And that tone was also set at the ECC. My concern with the redistrict, or the repurposing of Jennings School, is my two children and the needs that I'm trying to balance between them. And should a scenario require that they potentially go to two different schools because of needs of one versus other? At Jennings, being in a smaller school, she's very well-integrated. She can stay with the classroom, not required to use elevators or other parts of the school that would separate her. So that's very important. And the small school community was something that we really valued. I'm also concerned with redistricting, the ratio for special needs children that you've all talked about tonight. And as a mother of a special needs child, that is top of mind, that if we add more students to all these other elementary schools, that children like my daughter will not get this type of service that she is getting in the wonderful capacity that she is right now. So that is what I present to you. That is my question. And most of all, I'm here to express gratitude for the community that has welcomed us to Fairfield, that has provided to us, and afforded us opportunity to be a working mother, full-time, and still be able to sleep well at night, knowing that my children, both of them, special needs and otherwise, are getting the appropriate education. And I am very concerned that if Jennings were repurposed, although understanding the needs of the ECC, and empathizing for that, that it would cause a disruption to not just the children we're speaking about tonight, but the special ed students that I also need to be very mindful of.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman.
I didn't actually hear a question. I apologize.
No, my question is about maintaining ratios in the classroom. So right now, we have a very good ratio of students to teachers. And with the redistricting option, the classrooms will get bigger. How do we ensure that our children, especially those with special needs, that need, that thrive in these smaller ratios, will be able to continue to thrive?
Ms. Pitco?
Hi, thank you for coming and speaking. I know it's not easy to do. I know you don't know me. I have a seven-year-old also, who has special needs. She gets bused to a different elementary school to get services that she needs. I know that this Board of Ed would work very closely to make sure that everything we can do is equitable. In any scenario we choose, we're going to face that, right? We're going to be moving, we have special programming. We talked about in the questions that we asked even after that meeting, the consultant came back and said, well, we'd have to move a CLC room. So that's very much a reality to us. It's something that we have to think about. And there are a few board members who do have children with special needs. And so we're very cognizant of it.
Ms. Maxim Caneli?
Specifically to address your concern, that would be a non-issue in that, no classroom sizes would change. We have class size guidelines that go across the district. So the size of all children's classes would not be impacted by this. And thus, in fact, quite, to be quite honest with you, for our smaller schools, the ratio can be improved if a school's utilization increases. Case in point, if you look at our schools where they can only have two sections per grade, versus a school where you can have four sections per grade. In general, that four sections per grade can improve that ratio, in fact. But fundamentally, to answer your question, this would not cause any child to therefore have to be put into a class that is larger. It's likely, if Jennings, if there were a Jennings move, it simply would be that there would be more classes of that grade, but the classes themselves would not be larger.
Ms. Jacobson?
Hi, thank you, and thank you for sharing your story. Piggybacking on Mrs. Maxim Caneli's point, that's been something that I've been thinking about and analyzing, what's the information that we do have, is that we do have more flexibility at the elementary level, only because we do have some of this capacity that's available, and we do have class size guidelines. And so when I opened up earlier this evening, that is not so much the case at the secondary level. And so part of the bigger picture of this is, what do each of these do to middle and high school? And where we don't have class size guidelines, besides like the contractual, that's different than what we have for elementary. So to her point, reiterating, class size guidelines remain for elementary, but we do need to also be cognizant of how each of these scenarios swing with their variances for middle and high school as well. So just wanted to make that point again.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. Good evening.
Good evening. I will sign it, but I will speak first.
Okay.
Hi there. Thank you for having the town hall tonight. My name is...
I don't know your name.
He does. My name is Lisa Havy, and I'm very, very proud to represent the RTM in District 6. But I am here tonight to read a statement on behalf of my friend, Representative Sharon Pastilli, RTM District 3, and Deputy Majority Leader, who could not be here this evening because she is out of town. I stand with the Jennings community this evening, as both of my children attended Jennings, and I know firsthand what a special place it is. Rachel imbalance has made it necessary for the Board of Education to have to consider several redistricting plans, and I certainly don't envy their role in having to make this tough decision. Redistricting is always a very difficult and emotional process. I am urging the Board of Education to take Scenario 1 off the table. This scenario targets the Jennings community disproportionately. To eliminate Jennings School is to create a crater in the heart of our neighborhood. The school is centrally located, has a high number of walkers to both Jennings and Woods, and some students who walk to high school as well. Some families will be able to see Jennings from their backyards and not attend that school. It would make sense to impact a school where the difference in transportation costs would not be so great. Scenario 1 impacts an entire neighborhood of students that walk to school, to the library, to Black Rock Turnpike Shopping District with their friends. The way the campus is set up allows for students to have an increasing independence, which is important to their development. Scenario 1 also leaves Jennings extremely underutilized if it were to be used as the ECC. The ECC is an extremely valuable resource for the town, and provides services that are crucial for our youngest students. Scenario 1 is unfair because it pits the needs of the ECC to the needs of the Jennings community. Please take Scenario 1 off the table, and continue to look for alternatives that are least disruptive to the entire community. Jennings is a very special school, the hidden gem of Fairfield. Please don't dismantle it. Thank you for your service to our town, and for your consideration. Thank you. Again, that was on behalf of Sharon Pastilli, RTM District 3. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else like to speak? Good evening. What's your name?
Did you say Chapman? Chappa.
Chappa.
Okay. How does this work? So just talk now. No button. You guys took away the button. Thank you. Sorry about that. Anyway, well, thank you all for your time. And I, about six years ago, like many of the people in Jennings community, was moving from another place, looking for the perfect district for my two, now soon to be three kids, well, now I have three. And, you know, I'm an educator, public educator, 15 years. And now I'm fortunate enough to really work in a wonderful school. And I know how long it takes to build a school with a trusting community, to build those relationships with the kids and your staff. And it takes a very long time. And I've heard the words "repurpose," "remove," "replace." I've heard our school referred to as "an inventory that can be taken away and then put back." And it can. The seats are there. And I understand that. But the community that's been built has happened over a decade or more. And you could go back and talk to kids from Jennings many, many years ago. And I feel as though mental health is one of the most important things that is facing our kids right now. I know some of you guys have high school kids, and you realize that. Jennings School is setting them up for success. I just happened to peruse on the Board of Ed website, and just gathered some data. I was actually looking to see why it was Jennings was two times now, or maybe more, the school that was on the chopping block. So I was looking for, why is it Jennings? It would be underperforming. Is it the number of seats? But no, there's another school that's less utilized than Jennings with the same number of seats. So I was trying to figure it out. And I looked at data, and so I just compiled it. And the data was about school climate. And I'd like to share that with you guys now.
Mr. Chappa, I don't think you're going to make it through 34 salient points in...
No. Just look at the blue bars on the graph, and you'll notice that all but one blue bar, all but one peak is Jennings. And this is the school climate. When you guys get the data, or got the data from Dr. Jones, you saw the overall district, which was very nice. And you saw how well Fairfield's doing. It's amazing. Now, this is the parent perspective. There's also data from the teacher's perspective, which mirrors this. Again, focus on the blue. That's Jennings. Okay, that's over 150 responses. And the total data, I think, was about 15 or 1,700 responses from families, about how they feel, and how their children feel about their school. I'll give you guys a second.
Do you have a question for the board?
I do in a moment. I just, okay. If you look on the back page, you'll see how Jennings, only 20% of Jennings students feel as though they've been teased or made fun of, where it's almost double that in the other schools, on average. 8% have been physically hurt on the last survey. 8% have been physically hurt on the last survey, where in other schools, it's nearly double. Bullying is not a problem at Jennings, about 8%, where in other places, it's 18. So, this data is showing, we have a school with an amazing climate, okay? We have a school where we can quantify that something's working well, and these are the kids that are feeding into our middle schools and high schools. Okay, we've heard testimonials, well, here's the data, okay? Here's the data to show that. If you consider the other data regarding the high school students, 12% of them feel unsafe at school, 47% of them insulted...
Mr. Chapp, I just need you to, if you're going to have a question for the board...
Yes. The question is, number one, have you considered other options aside from those proposed by the consultant that would alleviate the issues without removing Jennings? And number two, have you considered that there might be an added cost, not only financially, but to the future of the Fairfield School District by removing this community? And it can, and the fact that it cannot be just replaced as inventory or reinstated.
Thank you for preparing this information and sharing it with us. Couple things. One, going back for the last couple of years, but even back to when Dr. Jones was here, one of the, you know, reasons, you mentioned Jennings being one of the smaller schools and there being another school that's also small and underutilized. I think what I took from it was, the thrust behind it was location, central location, trying to minimize the transportation times on the buses, et cetera. As for your last two questions, what you've done, I would say that's what we're here for. That's what we're doing now. Getting this report is the first step in that. And basically, everything you just described is what we plan on doing for the next several months. So, that would be my response to you. That's what we're doing. We're just, we're literally, we haven't even dipped our toes in the water. We haven't dove in, of course.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson?
Thanks, thanks for the reminder about the school climate survey. It is an important thing to remember, that climate is an asset of a school and of a district, and that once destroyed is hard to build. One of the, since our redistricting scenarios came out, we've gotten a lot of, as a board, board members, we've gotten a lot of feedback from the public, and a lot of kind of ground level information, which I think is very valuable. I think that we can't make this decision based on spreadsheets, based on simple, you know, choose one of the plans. It's very important for us to get in contact with the community, to try to understand objections, to think about alternatives. All that said, we as a board don't have the luxury of ignoring the data points. And while one community here is feeling significant and understandable pressure, there are other pressures throughout the district that we are trying to balance as well. It makes our job difficult, and, you know, and I don't relish the discussions that we're going to have going forward, but we are thinking on a townwide basis. And I don't think of Jennings as inventory, but I'm also thinking about other schools and other programs, such as the ECC, that are running out of it.
Ms. Vitale?
And I just want to be clear that it was never, Jennings was never brought up because we thought the school wasn't performing, or that it was a school that was easy to close. That was, we know what a great community Jennings is, and we do not take this discussion lightly. It is not pleasurable to be talking about possibly sending children to a different school. I mean, I think you can say that about any school. We talk about neighborhood schools, elementary schools build community. We know that. So, I just want to put that out there. Jennings, I think, came to, as has been mentioned, it's small, it's centrally located. Dwight is another school that could possibly be repurposed, I will say. I'm a Dwight family, there are stairs there, so in terms of a preschool, especially for children who have disabilities, it is not ADA compliant, so that kind of took it down a notch. It's not centrally located. So, it really was more the physical space and less to do with the emotional space and all the wonderful work that's being done in the building.
Thank you. I'm just curious, is Jennings ADA compliant?
I wanted to jump back in and just say that we recognize that there are two levels at Jennings. It's, that's a, so, they're not two different floors. We toward the facilities, we understand that that is a challenge. And again, going back to a point we made earlier about the ECC, we scanned, the district has scanned all the elementary facilities according to a rubric, you know, assigning various values to things that we would have to, we understand that that is a factor we would have to deal with.
Okay. I just didn't know the rationale for Jennings, and was it, it was something that you guys decided, or was McLoane and McBroom? McBroom?
Malone and McBroom selected that school.
Do they have any stuff that we could look at, just to see? Because it seems like they picked it last time, and then, again, I'm wondering if they looked at the enrollment and that stuff again, if they took the time to do that. I know...
Ms. Gerber?
Again, just to reiterate, a lot of it truly is the location. I mean, again, as I mentioned earlier when I was speaking, that, you know, when it comes to the ECC, you're talking about either taking a large chunk of the population out of a larger elementary school, or repurposing a smaller school. And the two schools that are our smallest schools are Dwight and Jennings. And Jennings, you know, my understanding is that it made sense to Malone and McBroom. And again, we did not get a detailed rationale from them, but purely looking at it, it was, it is centrally located, whereas Dwight is way off in Greenfield Hill, so you're talking about the ECC students, if it is to be an ECC, you're talking about busing three and four-year-olds all the way up Reading Road, as opposed to being centrally located to all of the different elementary schools that feed into the ECC. So, you know, it was no directive given by this board, and it was purely a geographical rationale, is my understanding.
I understand, I understand the centrally located thing, and I think that maybe is an argument more for having a larger school with K through five there, with approximately, you know, 200 or 300 students versus an ECC where you're only going to have to bus 175 kids at most, and many times, they're, you know, the parents bring them there. So, I understand the asset of having Jennings as Jennings as a central location, because there are, there's a greater enrollment with that.
Ms. Streysa?
Just to touch on your point about asking, like, what was the criteria and everything? I just, I don't have that information in front of me, but we were presented at previous meetings, I don't know the date, but it was about a year ago, but you could, you could look it up on the website, and you could watch the meetings. But there was a rubric used by the administration when talking even about selecting, when we were talking about going into multiple elementary schools. So, there was some criteria that you could go and find, and that may be helpful to answer some of your questions. I don't know if it will, but it might be.
Okay. Yeah, I was looking for that.
Ms. Maximin Canelli?
Just one brief point to something that you just said, which I just hope crystallizes for everybody in the room, the diff, and it's a, it's a task we're up for, it's a task that we recognize when you run for the Board of Ed, redistricting is bound to come up. But precisely your point of, that it makes more sense to you that we take a 504 school, move out 200 to 300 kids, maintain two classes per grade, and have an ECC, what do you think this room looks like when that meeting happens? It's the exact, so, I'm only saying that, and I'm not denigrating the view, I, that is a possibility, that would be an option we could pursue, but in no way does that alleviate the burden of the decision-making we're having to do. It just means we're looking at a different sea of faces who are going to be putting it right back on Jennings. As a case in point, I'm just putting that out.
Thank you so much. And my final question is to Mr. DeWitt. I didn't know you'd be here moderating, but I've been thinking about the cost-effectiveness of transitioning Jennings, the additional busing that would be required for this proposal with Proposal 1. And I'm wondering if anyone's thought outside of the box, as far as, I know it's been brought up before, acquiring another space. It seems like you need 10 rooms for approximately, what, eight or 10 kids per room? So, is it...
Acquiring a space for ECC?
Yes.
Well, it's, it is more of a Board of Ed question than a Board of Finance question.
And we have, we have looked...
Ultimately, no, I haven't, I haven't heard of any, anyway. Maybe Ms. Maximin Canelli?
I can say very pointedly, we have gotten unofficial, extremely explicit, and very direct, to be redundant, feedback, no way in hell. It's, it is perceived by the other town bodies, and the data would support that we have the space to take care of this internally, solve it with the resources you have. And we did initially, you know, first look, you know, would there be another, because we were keenly interested in the feedback, that, because the most strident voice we heard to begin with was from the ECC, and that voice was loud and clear, these children are best served by a single site. That was the perspective of staff, excuse me, the staff within the ECC. Central Office was charged with looking at multiple options. And so, initially, we'd had some conversation of looking, well, would there be other options, other ways to do a single site and maintain our 11 elementary schools? So, that was something we unofficially looked at to a degree, but again, the feedback was fairly immediate, and the data would support that that, that that's a fair point in terms of using our resources. We've got to do it within-house and figure out how to do it.
That makes sense, and thanks for bringing up the staff and their opinion from the ECC, I think is very important. I think, I haven't looked into the research of a split ECC versus one whole center, but I have looked into the research, as Mr. Representative Fairne has said, and having large redistricting, the effect it has on the students, their performance, their social, their well-being.
Right, but understand, all of these scenarios involve hundreds of children. So, again, if we're doing it, let's do it well, and at no point, if we at any point stop considering the social, emotional health of our children, I'm going to trust the public to bring us right back to that point.
Ms. Asa?
Yeah, I just want to address, to answer your question, yes, the administration did look throughout town, high and low, including the town, you know, development person. They did try to see if there was locations. They did identify some locations, and that ultimately did not work based on the rubric and actual availability. They looked at both buildings that would potentially be for sale or for lease. This also goes to our, what we're doing, looking for space for our Walter Fitzgerald Alternative High School. There is not space available, for the most part, for this program outside of our system that is some, a pill that can be swallowed financially at this time.
Ms. Pitco, I'll think, oh, Ms. Jacobson, go ahead.
Mr. Asa actually took what I was going to say, I was going to bring up Walter Fitzgerald and how we were looking.
Ms. Jacobson, are you in? I'm going to wrap this up after your comment.
Okay, yeah. Just getting back to the rubric that was used for ECC decision-making, that's been mentioned, and I'm sure plenty of us can get that information to you, but also, I don't know if everyone knows that we get Friday packets regularly available that are posted on the website. And recently, for, there was one that posted results of those rubrics that listed the schools that came up when, back when they were doing this, looking at different schools and different sites and how that came up. But, you know, Jennings wasn't one of them. So, it's, again, it's a reconciliation between district resources, district have, what Malone and McBroom came up with, and it's a beginning conversation. So, there's a lot of things to factor, but Jennings from in-house didn't come up as one of those sites, just because we knew it would need, for an immediate need, it, we wouldn't have the space or have the facilities and air conditioning, things like that, that an ECC needs. So, there's a lot of information available to that.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson. Ms. Vitale?
Just want to clarify, when that rubric was developed, it was in a different context. I think the Jennings, you know, got added to the list with the knowledge that if it was repurposed to be an ECC, a renovation would have to bring air conditioning into the building, make it ADA accessible, put, possibly put bathrooms into more of the classrooms, so that somewhat factored in. Just a little, and some people in this room maybe remember, we did actually have a sense of the body last year about repurposing a school. And back, I think I want to say it was probably a year ago, the sense of the body was, no. And then, when it came down to give the charge, we said, well, let's just, being that Malone and McBroom is running the scenarios, let's ask for it again, just to see if the numbers had changed, which is why it is on the list now.
Thank you, Ms. Vitale. Thanks, Mr. Chappa.
Mr. Moderator, point of order?
Sir?
I wonder if we could take an informal poll of the audience to see how many people are interested in giving comments. I worry, we're having very good and deep conversations here, but I want to make sure that the people who are here are hoping to speak, get a chance to do so.
Fair point, Mr. Peterson. Who would like to speak? I think we're good. Okay, no one else could speak? No, kidding. Yeah, please, have to...
Yeah, Mr. DeWitt, I think to Mr. Peterson's point, I think, though, that the amount of time that we devote to a topic, because I would hate for someone to have sat here this whole time...
Sure.
...and not get the chance to come up. So, that's where we as a board as well, need to be cognizant of that.
Absolutely. And what's your name?
My name is Stephanie Schechter, and I am a parent of both an ECC graduate and a Jennings graduate and a current Jennings student. My question, and it's like legitimately a question, because, because staff is so important, and I know that the staff at Jennings and at the ECC, I call Jeri Ann Mitchell my Ben Whisperer, because she's the only one that can get my kid to do stuff. Staff is very important, and my question for you is, if you repurpose the ECC, what do you do with the staff of Jennings?
Ms. Maximin Canelli?
I heard that tone. It, I mean, that's a central office decision, because obviously, you're talking about increasing the numbers of classrooms that are used in some of our buildings, and the staff would be themselves repurposed to a new school in that regard. I think that's a consideration and a detail that we are, I'm not even sure that that would be appropriate for us to have, because that's really not in the purview of the Board of Ed. But certainly, some of those schools, which only have right now three third grades, this could likely lead to a fourth third grade. So, that's what I would envision would be what would happen. But again, that would not be a board conversation in terms of deciding you're going here.
Yeah, I think that is a personnel issue. Probably don't want to talk about personnel issues.
No, no, other than to say all the Jennings...
Other than, we love our Jennings teachers, yes, I get it.
And the ECC teachers, yes. But, okay, so, and my principal.
Oh, the principal here, too?
And my principal. Well, I do ask, though, that when you make considerations, regardless of whether or not it's a personnel issue that's at Central Office, that we also remember that those are part of our family as well. So, thank you.
Very good point. Mr. Sahagian, good evening. That name I know.
And there's not even a pen for me to sign on.
Oh, I took it, no, I use my own pen. But you can have it, here, my gift.
Frank Sahagian, 20 Chelsea Street, also a teacher at Woods, and I promise I'm going to be brief. I know that's a surprise to all of you, especially considering there are a lot of prospective parents that I might be having in a few years, sitting behind me, if I don't have some already. But I just wanted to make public something I conveyed to you folks in email, that I think the public ought to hear, in Scenario 1, which I don't, if you, which you are going to consider next week, is the middle school, the feeder, and how the current situation is one where we don't have a singleton. So, we have 11 elementary schools, the current feeder existing system consists of all the schools that go to Ludlow Middle, go to Ludlow High, all the schools that go to Tomlinson, go to Ward. Woods, the school that I'm at, is split, with Osborne Hill and Holland Hill going to Ludlow, Jennings, and North Stratfield going to Ward. The scenario as it's presented would present a singleton, which I, as a teacher, an eighth grade teacher in particular, is really problematic. It's hard enough to watch these kids when they leave, when it's, they're split up and going to two different places with four schools. I threw out a suggestion, if you're going to consider Scenario 1, and I understand it's all a starting point for all these things, but if you do, you might want to consider or look at, and if Malone and McBroom can run the numbers, having Stratfield be directed towards Woods. And then, you would have, still maintain four schools at Woods, two of which would go to Ward, two of which would go to Ludlow, and it would also... Ward, two of which would go to Ludlow, and it would also ameliorate the problem of the overcrowding in Tomlinson, as Woods is a considerably bigger school than Tomlinson. So I just throw that out on the table, it's something to consider. And one last thing, and then I really don't have, my question, I guess, would be, is that something that could be run and look at, as you look at Scenario One next week and have that, that as something to consider? Because, again, it, it would be problematic to have a singleton. The second issue I just raised is when you look at all the scenarios, two, three, and four has a lot of, again, in the feeder program, has a lot of high schoo, a lot of high school changes, which, good luck. Meaning that you're going to have a lot of kids who are going from Dwight to, and other scenarios, Scenario One is the only one that really has only one change in the high school, in terms of change. McKinley relocated to Holland Hill, which would mean those kids would go to Ludlow. All the rest of them have a myriad of changes in high school feeders, a number of which would be Dwight to Burr, good luck, you know, with Ludlow, and changes in high school, there's a lot of changes in high schools in Scenarios Two, Three, and Four, just to throw that out to look at. And that's all I have to say. So my question is, again, is can you look at something like that for, as you look at Scenario One, because it's such, it would be, makes such a big difference, actually.
Thank you, Mr. Sahagian. Uh, Ms. Asa?
I, I think several board members have raised concerns about the middle school and high school feeder patterns and what would happen with an elementary redistricting like we're talking about. So my guess would be that the majority of this board, once we get down to a scenario that, if, if we get to a scenario that we're going to pursue, I think we would be looking at those as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Told you I'd be quick.
That was quick.
Hi there.
Hi.
Katie Flynn, 204, I can't, I can't write it. So most of my questions were kind of taken care of. I am an ECC and a North Stratfield parent, and I would say, secondary to the Jennings community, we are one of the other two schools really directly impacted. We lose five classrooms in one scenario, two in another. And I guess my first question, I kind of have a multifaceted. My first question is, how do you guys address our building? We are 12 years out from a renovation, our parking lot is falling apart, our kindergarten wing with all those bathrooms is pretty much in that same capacity. So I'm just curious if you guys have thought about that? Is that part of your thinking in your scenarios? And then I can ask my second one.
Ms. Rotelli?
I am touring all the schools tomorrow, with Jennings being next week, being new to the board. I haven't, I've, I've visited a few, but none actually that are.
We're not air-conditioned?
That are in these scenarios? So, just.
There's a lot of concern, like I'm saying, I, as you said, that Jennings is right up for a renovation, we are not. So does that change for the whole school? Because if you're going to disrupt a community like that, and then take a wing and make it an ECC and leave the rest of us disenfranchised, that's a little dramatic for a community.
Ms. Vitale?
We did tour the elementary schools last year, those of us who are on the board, and did appreciate that if we were to claim some of that space, there would need to be some renovations that would need to be done. We've also talked about as a board, looking at our long-range facilities plan, and possibly, and our waterfall, and reworking that. I think as we make these decisions, we absolutely are going to have to look at, you know, how that affects our facilities planning. You know, we looked at just the drop-off, if the ECC were there, what would that look like? We knew that there was need, going to need to be air conditioning.
Yeah, I just want to make everyone, like, we keep saying, maybe I'm the first parent to talk from another school besides Mr. Farnham, that this affects all of us. We're sitting here, those 12 kids being moved are my kids' best friends, you know? We all have the same intent, and we all want to make sure, but this is, I can do my second question maybe, because it's better. Do you feel like you guys, you, you get saddled with making these decisions, you know? But the problems aren't created by the Board of Education, the housing, the, the metro center development, those are created by the town. Do you feel like you're getting the support, top-down, bottom-up, by every other town body, to do what you really need to do? By Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, TPZ, Conservation, is there a collective plan? I read the Strategic Planning Committee, and in there it says, these decisions should be made wholly as a town. Do you feel like you guys are doing that? You could answer too, Mr. Dewitt, you're sitting right here, too.
I could. Ms. Jacobson?
Sorry.
I don't want to thank you, I don't want preference.
Now I'll write, because I'm not as nervous.
I think I've already kind of answered that question myself, personally. I think that we can do a better job. I think that we need to move as a community towards greater collaboration in terms of how we address issues, whether it be a state mandate or not. Now, we can certainly all go and advocate for it to be a mandatory requirement, we can do that.
We as a town, or we as parents?
No, as, well, as residents, you know? I think that some information that I have seen recently, things are slow, but I do believe that some greater collaboration may be something that will be required. So, the plan of conservation and development, I don't know if many of you participated in any of those meetings, I know that I did. So that plan is currently up to be renewed, so there's an opportunity for all of us to lend our voice to that, and to talk about some of the issues that exist from the previous iteration of that plan, and how we can advocate for greater collaboration. But do, I think it's a matter of leadership, I do. And I think it's a matter of will, to not kick the can to each other around, well, that's their issue, that's their issue, we don't get involved in that, we don't get involved in that, we don't have the authority for that. You know, it, it's easy, that's an easy, that's an easy ride. I'd rather us collaborate and say, start working towards mutual, mutual goals, and try to find areas where we can take steps to do that, rather than acting in silo, which I think has caused, didn't necessarily cause all of this to happen recently, but I don't foresee that it's making things any easier. So, it's state, it's local, and it's Clark. So I, yeah, I would, I would say yes.
Ms. Maxim Canelli?
My answer was simply no. To answer your, your yes or no question, it was no. You know, there, there, I, I feel no sense of collaboration whatsoever. I think, I think there are also plenty of well-intentioned people out there, but this is a force of will that has to be visited upon the town, and people need to be wrenched out of their places. This is a, this is a true force of will that will need to take place to do exactly what Mrs. Jacobson just described, and it is not happening at present, and it's not easy. I'm, I'm not actually exactly criticizing some other town bodies for not having done it. But there's no question that at this moment in time, we are being asked to solve something that we had no role in creating. And that is where we find ourselves.
Mr. Asa?
I, I would just say that I, I'm hopeful and looking forward to more collaboration. I, I do see it coming. I think the will is there, from the different town bodies, definitely from us, we're ready to come to the table. But I will, I will say that I, I do believe we have had financial support in our buildings, renovations and additions. I, I will, I, I do want to stress that the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and RTM have funded and supported the projects of the last decade and beyond. Getting back to what Mrs. Vitale said, an important piece for me, moving forward, is building upon the long-range facilities plan that was developed years ago, and our waterfall. And I think while a year ago, I was really gung-ho about, let's get this done, let's get the committee, let's, let's start working on this, I've stepped back a little bit and realized we have some really pressing issues, one of which we're talking about tonight. I feel confident in our administration, I feel confident that our new Director of Facilities, Mr. Papa George, has the will and the desire to work with the board on a long-range plan and be as strategic as possible with it. And that will piggyback on the collaboration and making sure there's transparency, so we can get the buy-in and collaborative work with the other town bodies.
Could I ask a little bit of a follow, follow-up? Is that all right? Do you think this would be worthwhile to, I don't, I hate saying put on hold, because I've watched you guys for three years put this on hold. My students were transferred from ECC Ward to ECC Stratfield, it has been a difficult journey for them, I don't want to sound like that, but do you think since we're in a new administrat, we know, when new administration, it would be worthwhile to get a collective body, people from Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, TPZ, the people doing Metro Center, you guys, and really come up with a long-term plan before you displace hundreds of students from every single school? Sorry.
Ms. Vitale? I'll, I'll come back to Mr. Peterson.
Well, I, I think it.
I know, I know it is.
There is a Strategic Planning Committee who addressed a lot of these issues also, and is coming up with the plan of what the future of Fairfield is going to look.
No, a plan for this.
Well, but this is, this is potentially part of that, potentially. I mean, and we've, members of this board have met with members of the Strategic Planning Committee, and we had discussions about the neighborhoods, just the idea of the neighborhood school. Would you be willing to give up the idea of a neighborhood school if there was a cost savings and the school that you went to maybe had air conditioning and a science lab and, you know, all the bells and whistles that maybe some of our schools do not have? So those conversations are happening over here, we're doing our work over here, you know, other town boards are doing their work over there, and we each have responsibilities that I don't think that we should be sharing, in terms of making these decisions about what's in the best educational interest of our students. That is the work of this board and the work of our administration. I think that it, you.
I just think it's good to get out there for the public, I think a lot of people are asking these questions in silos, in parent silos, in PTA silos. Sorry.
Now, Mr. Peterson?
Just a, a few points, in, in random order. There is a, a funding for a communication officer in the, in the next year's budget. Communication with the public is a, is a big thing this board has, has talked about for a long time. It's difficult. It, it can't just be Moms of Fairfield. It, it does need to be more detailed, and it's, but it is, it's hard, it's hard to bring people in. The other thing that I was going to say, just as a, a note to other, we go to a lot of meetings. People on this board go to a lot of meetings. I, for example, am the liaison to the Board of Finance, which Mr. Dewitt is the vice-chair of. One pet peeve of mine, I, I would invite other boards that don't already have it, they could send liaisons to our board. We're, we're very happy to fill out the chairs in the audience, and, and just, and have the conversation so that we're not, so we, we don't want to blindside anybody. We want everyone involved in discussions from the beginning, so we, we can make the discussions, the determinations here at the table that are in the educational best interests, but not surprise other boards, the, the more that we can work together. And like some of the other members, I, I think, I think that that's on the horizon. I, I do see encouraging signs.
I just have to piggyback on that. I, I would like to, I would like to thank Mr. Peterson for saying that, I think we all feel that. And all joking aside, I think it would be really beneficial. And to Mr. Peterson's point about a lot of meetings, I mean, I ran for the board because I was sold that it was two meetings a month, what a, I mean, I don't know what, I don't know what they, I mean, they really pulled the wool over my eye on that one. But, but no, all joking aside, all the town boards have a lot of meetings, a lot of committees, but I think that's a great idea that, that was just voiced.
Ms. Pitco?
I want, too, I'm going to piggyback off of what you just said. Part of the fact that the nine of us go to so many different other meetings in town, Board of Health, CES, RTM, we're constantly talking to our constituents, but more importantly, during budget season, a lot of what we've been talking about comes out, class sizes, teachers, you know, you name it, what we've been bringing up. We've gotten to this point because we kept punting some of the bigger things, and we are very much faced with the realization of where we're at.
Ms. Leeper?
I'm just going to share that I, I do think the work that we do that is so siloed is a disservice to the best outcomes at times. And we are charged with ensuring we provide the best possible education to our children. But dealing with racial imbalance and some of these other things is happening to us, and it's a little bit outside of the purview of that mission, yet we still are disrupting many children and families and educators' lives, having to deal with that reality. And to piggyback with what Mr. Peterson just said, we go to a lot of meetings, and I'm the liaison to the RTM, and last week, or two weeks ago, there were two meetings where they talked about more affordable housing units coming on board for the town, and not one person mentioned racial imbalance. And then last week, I was at TPZ, where they were talking about High Street and Beacon View, and not one person talked about the effect of racial imbalance. And it seemed like this isn't the best way we could be operating, to get the best outcome for, for our children, and for our families, and for all of us.
Ms. Maxim Canelli?
And to your point about, wouldn't it be better to hold this off? My reason for saying no to that, as appealing, could look, we're always asking for more information, and the moment that we're at a point of making a decision, the next day there is more information. And that's not a reason to act in haste, it's just a source of frustration. But I would say with putting it off, that doesn't help us with the ECC, that does not help us with the state expectation, that does not help us with the, the current developments that are already going to happen. And I don't, I, I'm all for optimism, but the work that's described and the force of will that it will take, and I don't know that we can count on what, what that could even possibly result in, but I don't see it changing what we are dealing with right now. If I thought that there was a possibility of a collaborative town body brain trust, solving what we nine are attempting to solve, I'd be all in, I don't see that happening.
Ms. Jacobson?
Final comment on this is that, totally agree that that's not going to happen right now, I'm just looking, going forward in terms of some of the issues, I think that it would be helpful. Doesn't help us right now with what we've got. I will say, though, that some of this information is going to need to be corrected, in my opinion. Because what things look like using 1920 enrollment doesn't help you or us know what that looks like in a few years. So that's just my take on that. So, holding off, no, but I do think that some of this needs to be fixed before you can make an actual informed decision, but that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. Someone else like to speak?
Hi. I'm Lucas Walker, and I live at 127 Blue Ridge Road. And I, I just wanted to briefly mention, before I get to my question, that I really appreciate all the input that's come in from the Jennings family that's here tonight. And I just wanted to make sure that, you know, all the talk about Jennings is such a valuable community, and making sure that we look at children and not just data points, I just want to reiterate that I hope you realize that, in this case, the data points are also kids, that ECC is also a valued member, is a valued community in and of itself, that I really liked how Mike Chappa brought in the data showing how the Jennings kids go on to enrich the school community. I just want to highlight that that's also true for ECC, right? That there is, there's definitely concrete benefits to having such a wonderful program that my oldest son went through a couple of years ago, Ms. Jeriann was his teacher, too. And I, I think having those kids enter the rest of the school system more prepared is a fantastic benefit, and it's something that when I talk to other people who are in other school districts about that program, they can't believe that we have that available for our kids in our community. And, and so, it's, it's super clear from the sea of shirts here tonight that Jennings is a really important part of the Fairfield Schools community, and I also just wanted to say that ECC should be clearly recognized that way as well. But that was just a little comment that I had before I get to the other.
Fair point.
The other thing. And that is that, listening to something that Representative Farnham said when he was here hours ago, and. hours ago, and that a couple of people have also touched on that has sort of gone slightly unchallenged, that I want to poke at and question a little bit and I want to ask the board to poke at and question a little bit, is the idea of the principle of least disruption being our lodestar in this decision-making process. I think that by definition, the principle of least disruption is always going to benefit the people who are currently best served by the status quo, right? And so anytime we want to reach out and help people who currently are not being best served by the status quo, we're going to have to disrupt in some way the people that are best served by the status quo. And I just want to say that I don't think I'm alone in being a parent in this school district who is ready to show my kids and show other kids that disruptions can be okay and they can be beneficial and life can go on even with those disruptions. And that is a type of education too, that I think is really important that our students experience. And so I think with all the challenges that choosing one of these options brings, it's always, as we've seen, a very attractive option to just say, well, this is not the optimal time to make any decision. These are all unattractive options and then not do anything. And so I was wondering if because these things are sort of coming to a head and there's a lot of reasons why it is more urgent this time, I think it's possible that action by at least one of the town boards can show the town, can show other boards that this is something serious, that at least some part of our town is prepared to really consider and take action on. I was wondering if the board would consider taking the no-action option off the table. You know, there's, there's been a lot of talk of striking one of the options before we get to the decision process. Is it possible that we can strike the do-nothing option and say, we're, we're going to do something this time? This is going to end with some definite action on the question of resource utilization, particularly on addressing the racial imbalance statutes? So that, that's my question.
Mr. Asa.
I think that's a very valid question. Took you a while to get there, but I like what, I like, I like what you had to say. I appreciate your perspective from, from everything. I think this is kind of an underlying thing that we've been dealing with and is this board willing to take action or not? And I think it's an individual thing, so I can't speak for anybody else, but I'm here today to say that I don't think we, we can turn a blind eye anymore to this. I don't, I don't love any of these options and I really, quite honestly, I love being on the Board of Education. I, I feel like it's really rewarding because I feel we were able to make an impact in a fabulous school system. This part sucks, but it's necessary and you don't run for a town body like this if you're not willing to make tough decisions. And you're not, you're going to have a target on your back by some and you're going to be, others are going to be happy. We have to, at the end of the day, do our job and I think our job is to take action.
Well said, Ms. Asa. Mr. Peterson?
Just a couple of observations. I really, I really like your formulation of the principle of least disruption helping those that status quo is already serving well. That is something that should be born in mind. I, I also kind of would lean in the, in the camp where Mr. Asa is, that this is something we've been punting for a very long time. I would, I would be reluctant to look forward and, and see that this board took no action at the end of this cycle. We, we've been dealing with it literally for years now and I, I feel we're coming to a point where no action simply is not an option, but we are nine, we are nine voices. And to go back to my, my experience as a student in this town just one, one more time. I'm going to be-
With Osborne Hill, right?
In 1987, this, this, this is a different story. This is a different story with a different school. It happened to me twice. In 1987, this town consolidated the two high schools. I'm going to be 50 years old this year. I was in the first graduating class of the combined high school. I have friends who went to Ludlow, I have friends, I went to Ward, graduated from that building as Fairfield High. There are a lot of people who think it was awesome and it was a great decision and all, all the friends I made. There are some people who are not over it. So I think from an individual standpoint, there will, there are always going to be poor effects and positive effects and we have to balance that as a board. That's just what we have to do.
Ms. Maxim Caneli.
I come at this with the lens of as an educator myself, I've been working in education now for 29 years and so I'm fairly versed in a lot of the educational research, by no means all and by no means do I think that that journey is finished, but I have, I would agree with Mr. Asa and Mr. Peterson that based on the present circumstances and based on the educational research with which I am familiar, Fairfield has a growing problem and it's time to address it. And it would be, it's up to us to make that case because I think even if the nine of us are convinced of it, I think the rest of the town, we can't assume that they all know that. That's the educational piece I referenced earlier. So I think we do need to make that case. I know that, I believe we have reached a point where we would be remiss in doing our, fulfilling our educational mission if we did not take some steps. What the steps are, that's the next part, but that's what I would say.
Ms. Jacobson.
I just wanted to ask you if you felt, if your statement was hypothetical or you feel like someone is not being served well?
Well, my kid has been served very well so far and the, I think that clearly, clearly different programs have different needs, right? And there's going to be changes and people need to have their needs addressed. I also think that the idea of the racial imbalance statute in particular is based on the idea that when there is a racial imbalance, that's a problem that needs to be addressed. So I guess that's what I was talking about.
Okay. So you were, was it academic nature or it was more of the racial imbalance issue that you were referring to? Because I just want to be clear what you were trying to say.
Yeah. I mean, the, you know, there's, there's also data to show that there, there are academic impacts, right? On the, on McKinley in particular. So there's correlation, causation to look at, but that is there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you.
Would someone else like to speak? Ms. Mishka. How are you?
Good. How are you all?
I'm well. Thank you for coming tonight.
Oh, I'm so excited to be here.
Lovely to see you.
It's kind of like deja vu. Oh, I don't have a school. I guess I'll just do taxpayer. Suzanne, Mishka, do I have to give my address too? Are we, is this the formality?
Mine's long-sighted.
Oh, okay. So here we are. 2007, I think I sat in the same room. The last 13 years, we've watched the colors change, the school names change, the them against us change. We've gone back and forth on this. I went back yesterday before I spoke to see really how long this has really been going on and I think I went back to 2003 when the McKinley parents sued that Board of Ed because they didn't like the half-moving to McKinley, half-moving to Stratfield. Okay. My issue here is, yes, like, okay, the time is now, it's, we've done this for 17 years. I came to you with my son as a second grader at Riverfield because we were going to move 25 kids to Dwight and I wore my shirt and we stood up, we clapped, we did the same thing. My son is now a junior at Boston University and we are still doing the same thing. And I don't know there is the perfect solution. I, I don't have the solution. That's why I'm not on that side of the table. I sit in the back room and can just have my own fun commentary. My big issue here in looking at all four of these scenarios has to do with, Mill Hill was part of the discussion of the plan that went before the state, that we needed Mill Hill to be a 504 in or indoor of that size because that was going to factor into redistricting. And yet when I pull four scenarios today, and I now appreciate that ECC is part of this equation, but it's like we keep selling a product that we need to move and fix these buildings because of redistricting and I think we get town boards to agree with us and then when we do our scenarios, we're now bringing in North Stratfield or we're looking at Jennings. And we keep doing this kind of dance. And this was something I cautioned a year or so ago and I said, we need to look at a facilities plan because when we look at a facilities plan and figure out what we want the whole big picture to look like at some point, you know, we maybe could have addressed ECC in part and building something on, at Mill Hill that could have alleviated. Now I know it takes time, but you're going to have to do the same thing at Jennings. Jennings is, is not where it needs to, I mean, needs to be, nor Stratfield is in dire need and yet we're thinking of reallocation. So the problem is, is whatever you decide to do is going to come with a price tag and it's going to come with a school. And I know that's going to happen is you are going to go back in front of these boards and they're going to be like me and say, hey, we just paid for Mill Hill. And I get you had portables up there and we don't want portables, but you told us this was part of redistricting and now you're doing something completely different or looking in some other site. I don't know what the real answer is, but it seemed like we just keep going back in one side of town over and over and over. And I don't know, maybe we need to branch across Black Rock Turnpike. Maybe we are going to need to look at putting more things in other schools because this isn't working. I mean, it just isn't working. And I don't have the solution, but I look at the four scenarios and I'm really kind of frustrated because I feel like we keep going back over the same scenario over and over again. And, and we definitely have to fix the feeder pattern at the middle schools. That was a mistake in 2010 and I know we fixed some of it, but the thought that these kids come from over at, you know, McKinley, are coming all the way across town on buses to Tomlinson is ridiculous. And I really would like to not only get a cost evaluation of all of these scenarios, but I'd like to understand how the new programs that you've put in place to help McKinley. I agree with Ms. Maxim Caneli. Well, everyone might like McKinley. When we saw those data points with the district improvement plan under Dr. Title, I almost fell off my chair because I too sat here and said, the state has no right to tell us what to do with our schools. But when I, you can see that these test scores are not showing these kids are getting the same level of education or they need additional services, we need to be providing that. And so I agree that we have an issue. So my question is, once we make this determination and we look at the financial costs, do you guys feel like you might be at that point? Like that you'll be satisfied? That you will be able to reset your facilities plan and your waterfall plan to meet the goals that you are foreseeing you're going to have to do? Or do you think that you're going to end up coming to a conclusion that ECC, because it will need and you will support a full space, will that now need to be a new waterfall option that you will have to put in there? And would you be willing to hold up on breaking ECC in the directions of any four of those scenarios? Because to me, you've got two different scenarios. You've got a redistricting, you've got an ECC plan and you're trying to do them together. Are you willing to separate them and look at them from two different angles or does it have to be an all-in, all, all or nothing at this point?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mishka. Are you, she, she almost raised her hand. Ms. Maxim Caneli.
I think one of the things that we've said over and over is that what's important about this is that we, and that's where it's complicated, is that this board is committed to doing it all at once.
Okay.
And that the, and of course I hear your point because that's sort of harkens back to the point where I said was that the moment you make a decision, the next day you've got a new piece of data which, if you said, oh, if I had known that, it, it just, but at some point, you need to show leadership, we need to make a decision. And I don't see the two issues as being divorced. I don't, everything that we're looking at on here, whatever we do with the ECC, we're looking at that that has, there will be a ripple effect, that something will happen as a result because we are already seeing that 10 classrooms are insufficient. So the fact that we've committed to 10 now, we already know we need 11 or 12.
Okay.
Right now. So it's, that needs to be addressed with a long-range term, long-range vision. Also to your point about how for a long time we were, we were waiting on redistricting because the town was told we need to wait, well, what's happening with Mill Hill? What's happening with Holland Hill? That was truly, I think that was a wise decision on our part because truly at that point, you don't want to tell people, we are redistricting you now and we know for a fact, we're doing it again in three years when Holland Hill is completed. At that point, we needed to get that approved as a 504. Time will tell if we regret that Mill Hill has now been made an, actually a smaller school by virtue of that plan. We don't know. For right now, it, it's, it's going to serve our, our purposes and we'll make do with what we have. But to your, I think I've answered your point. The one thing I will, I do want to correct, lower test score, I mean, one school to another, leave McKinley out of the conversation. One school compared to another, none of them have identical test scores. That doesn't mean their educational needs are not being met. I think one of the most important metrics to look at is improvement. Have we met the students where they are and improved on it? And a lower test score, well, relative to what? Because if you're scoring, and again, I'll make up numbers, if you're scoring the 80th percentile this year, that might be lower than another school's 90th, but it's up from 70 and they're only up from 89. You know, so, so just as a point that-
Yeah. No, I, I appreciate the relative, but at some point you, you have, it's just kind of like, you know, when you look at an elementary report card and I, I'm sure they've changed since I looked at them, but I mean, you know, it needs improvement, is improving, will meet goal, won't meet goal. I mean, at some point, the district has a level of goal that they are trying to ask all children to try to achieve, right? In order to continue to move them and that, that capacity should be somewhere equal. You're going to have kids who overachieve, you're going to have kids who underachieve, but you've got to have a, a level. And when you see a disparity sometimes in the data, and I guess, I get that it's data points, it is something that kind of rises the concern that you do need to make sure that that school, while it might be getting the exact same curriculum as every other school, it might need-
You're repeating that.
Right. It might need additional services to help the, the children within that school who are not maybe reaching their goals at the same level or same pace as somebody else's, i.e. that's why you bring in the specialists that you do. So that's what I'm saying, like, my concern is like when you, when we originally saw that data, you know, my concern was like, let's make sure that this school is getting the right attention and is getting the attention that it needs. Because if you're anyone on the outside looking in, that would be, when I, if I was in this state, I'd be like, wait a second, we've got an issue here going on at this school.
Well, and, and that's a national issue. I mean, it's called the achievement gap.
Right.
And so it's, that, that's not an unknown and it is certainly not exclusive to Fairfield and it is certainly not exclusive to that one school. So this, this is a nationwide data point that's worth examining, which I do think Fairfield is putting its attention on. I mean, all of our, not to go off on a completely different topic, but all of our interventions that we've been looking at, from tier one to tier two to tier three, are all a very concentrated focus for all of our students. But that's certainly one group that of course has needs that need to be met.
Right. And, and I applaud what the district has done with a lot of the new programs that they put out since the district improvement plan came into play. And I, I think it's helping a, a great deal. I mean, I think it's great that we've stopped and taken a look at it to do that.
Ms. Jacobson.
I'm going to push back a little bit on some of this because there's no other school in Fairfield that has 40 different languages being spoken in its school. So it is obviously a very special, unique school. So that we have dedicated a great amount of resources to. It is also a school that has a required bilingual education program because of the languages at that school that no other school has. So one of the questions that I have followed up on at this point regarding this is that under racial imbalance regulations, you cannot redistrict students who are in a bilingual education program if redistricting, redistricting them causes a loss to that program. So what will we need to replicate that in many different locations? What does that look like? So that will be a consideration that we haven't talked about. It is also a Title I school. So we receive additional federal funds for McKinley for targeted assistance for the special populations that exist there. So there is obviously a very unique population there that many different sources and resources are coming in to assist with that, but let's not pretend like this is like the level playing field because it's not. So-
No, I'm not saying that it is.
Right. So you can't, it's not apples to apples generally speaking, like the populations in all of our schools are unique and different and-
No. And I'm not saying that they are- No, and, and I'm not saying that they are going to be apples and apples, and I'm not saying that the school doesn't need the additional support. Not at all. What I'm saying is that, at some point, you, you have to, as a district, set a level. I mean, we can't be promoting children out of, out of a school, onto middle school, if they can't meet the criteria of what the next level is that is going to be asked of them. And like I said, I think that in the last couple of years, the district has stopped and taken a real look at a lot of the programs that maybe not were working, or were not reaching the children the way that they should have.
Well, just recently, McKinley was a school of distinction in the state of Connecticut. So I'm, just want to reiterate that we are doing that. I think that that school and the staff there are doing quite an exceptional job. So, always work to be done, so, but I just don't want to make it seem like something that it's not. So, and far as the cost analysis, I totally agree with you. That is, again, part of, I agree that we need to look at that and see what each one of these scenarios will look like fiscally speaking. And again, I've raised some issues around Title I funding, bilingual education program, things like that. So there's still a lot to dig into, and we're, like Mr. Asa had said previously, literally at the iceberg on that. So, that's my take on that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Asa?
I, I think just to reiterate what I said for the last commentator, and to answer your question, I, I believe we have to solve it all. I believe we have to do it all now. And I believe we wholeheartedly have to look at our facilities planning when we make these decisions.
Yeah, I, I do. I do think that your facilities are going to have to be addressed, and I, I do think you have to be willing to figure out how, which ones you're going to really want to focus on first in order to make the ends meet. And, and I, I do caution, because I am concerned, if you're going to try to make these moves for, I don't know, maybe it's not in the next fiscal year, or next school calendar year, you know, you're, you're now putting kids into schools that aren't meeting the, the building needs of maybe the population that's there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone else have a question, comment? Yes, ma'am? Off topic. A new topic?
Well, you may not like it, though.
Just to be clear, we're going to have a new ECC at some point.
Oh, listen, you know what? I'm a retired Fairfield teacher. My kids are grown. I don't care. But I do have some handouts. I'm a visual person.
this entire presentation in three minutes or so, but-
No. The last section there is, they're actually building inspections for Roger Ludlow Middle School. One of the packets there.
Yeah.
Do I have to sit there? First of all, my name is Jackie Riley. I taught for 40 years in Fairfield Public Schools. I raised four kids. I have a son who teaches at Roger Ludlow Middle School, and a daughter who's also in Roger Ludlow Middle School. I'm going to give you the short version of the four pages you have here. I have a concern about the generator that's in Roger Ludlow Middle School right now. I had a problem with carbon monoxide poisoning a couple of years ago, and I investigated it for years. I finally was sent up to Yale, and in looking through everything, and there's a lot of information in there, but finding out, there was, were never any building inspections done for code compliance through the building department. And you could see there, I have here, it was the 1996 International Mechanical Code that actually I verified with Tom Conley at the building department, as well as the state building department. It says, you can read it, it's about the, you can't have the exhaust discharged anywhere where it can be readily drawn into the ventilating system. There's no lawsuit here, and there won't be, so.
So, what's, what's your question?
I'm not questioning, I'm just actually letting you know about this.
Okay.
I think it's important. In 2015, Mr. Cullen was helping me investigate this carbon monoxide issue. And he had a, Mr. Donald from Van Zelm came. I finally got through Freedom of Information. I did get part of an email where he said to Ms., or actually emailed to Mr. Cullen, and he said, there's a high likelihood that the exhaust fumes could be drawn into the outdoor air intakes when the air handling units are running. They have it opposite, it's 30 feet opposite, it's, I don't know, I have, I'm not sure if you have a picture, I know Mrs. Vitale has it. There's pictures of the air intakes that are opposite the generator. So what it is, is it runs for 15 minutes every Monday morning before school opens, it's a test run. What my concern is, they actually did raise the exhaust stacks to 10 feet. It was probably only a couple inches originally. And the problem is that I feel it's not high enough above the exhaust stacks. Mr. Cullen came up with that number. Mr. Donald, I've spoken with him, he did not come up with anything, and neither did Mr. Belcher, who works for FM Generator.
I just want to thank you for this information, but I just want to be hesitant about just mentioning specific staff members' names.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Especially, if you have a question, or just-
Okay, I just want to-
Thank you for bringing this to our attention, and I will look at it and follow up with staff, if you have a question. But I just don't want to get too specific about speaking about conversations that staff have been, that they are not here to address.
Okay. Well, I just want, want you to know, I have a lot of stuff here about it being the diesel exhaust, the, what it does to you, about the fact that it's cancer-causing, carbon monoxide. Also, there's something about the kiln exhaust, the kiln system also, the exhaust system was never checked. And we had, we did have them checked, actually, finally, a couple of years ago. And that also, I'm concerned, because it never had a damper. We were told that it, it probably doesn't have a damper, you can't tell, and they have two exhaust systems, so, because we did not have it working properly, the roof exhaust fan wasn't working. So the exhaust would go out the bottom, come up part of the ductwork, go back out through the canopy hood exhaust, and it could be filtered back into the room.
So if I, if I may, I think this, I think this would be good data for Mr. Papa George.
Mm-hmm.
I just, there's, I'm, I'm, I'm just a little, slightly uncomfortable with, this wasn't working, and this was closed, and this wasn't opening, and, and without any, without any experts, you know? And again, the, what, the person that's identified in here is, is no longer, he retired, so.
Right, right.
So there's a lot of data here, but I, but I think Mr. Papa George is, would, is the right source for that. Do you agree, Ms. Vitale?
I do, and I will, as I said, be asking about this superintendent.
But thank, thank you for the data.
I want you to be aware of it, and I want you to look-
I appreciate you bringing this to the board's attention, and I will-
I have information there, and I did write to the state. The state is looking into it as well, and to tell me whether it's safe. Yale also will send an industrial hygienist down if you want, because they're part of the Tools for Schools resource team. And they were interested in it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. I'll give you three minutes. What's your name?
Maurice Irigori. So I am over, oh, I will, I will. I'm over at Mill Hill, so just a, hi, Maurice Irigori, I'm over at Mill Hill. So just bringing a little bit of a different perspective, and, you know, I, I think, in three out of the four scenarios, we are, you know, being redistricted, right? And I think it's only in one of them that we, we kind of stay put. And I think personally, we've come to the realization that if we have to redistrict our kids, and we have three kids in the Mill Hill District, you know, we'll, we'll get over it. We'll, as parents, we'll, we'll kind of set that tone for our kids. But, you know, I just want to represent, you know, I think there's been a lot of talk about, you know, specific areas, specific schools in this session, but, you know, I think ultimately, you guys have a tough decision to make. And I think you really do have to take a look at everything for, for the whole, for the whole town, right? You have to take a look at what's best for the ECC. You know, that's, that's obviously a huge decision and a huge part of it. And then, you know, what's the fewest amount of students affected, you know, if, if at all possible, you can take into account, right? So, you know, I know there's a, people affected, no matter which way you go, right? So, the real quick question is, two real quick questions are, what level of importance was kind of the least amount of people affected i- in the decision-making process? And it could be a quick answer, you know, not looking for a diatribe, but, and also just what are next steps and kind of timelines you guys are looking at?
Ms. Asa?
To answer your first question, we haven't gotten there yet. And to your second question, I'll defer to Mrs. Vitale.
As I said earlier in the meeting, we're going to start by a discussion of Scenario One. And I, my plan is to have one of the scenarios, well, Scenario One may take more than one meeting, having it on the agenda until we come to a decision. In terms of the racial imbalance, we did report to the state. The superintendent needs to give an update in June on where we are with the racial imbalance plan, what actions have been taken. And they're, you know, looking for movement on this. So now that we are speaking on it, we've been, it's going to stay on our agenda until we come to a resolution. A redistricting, if it does occur, would not happen for a couple of years. Mill Hill renovation needs to happen, be completed first. So we're talking a couple of years out. Not looking to drag this out, but I want to give the board the time they need to, to get the information they need, to make a decision that everyone feels as comfortable as you possibly can feel with such a hard decision. I know that isn't really specific with a, a set deadline, but expect to see it on our meeting agendas, pretty much moving forward. I'm going to try to be specific in what our discussion point will be, just for the public, so you, so you know that we're not going to be talking about everything, and Scenario One is really where we're starting.
Yeah. So, yeah, a lot of support behind Scenario One as well, you know, and there, there's no right answer, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Would anyone else like to comment? Ms. Vergara. How did we go a whole night with an RTN rep showing up? In person, anyway.
Jill Vergara. I, since we're in the middle of the budget season, and we are experiencing, we've seen a cut from the first select woman, I've heard, heard conflicting reports about whether or not that this cut would affect programming or operations. And I just wanted to ask you directly, because I know part of it comes from a recalculation of the health insurance. And I wanted to see whether or not that is consistent with your numbers. And I, I also wanted to see whether the additional cut of $600,000 would affect programming operations, and if so, what? And if it does, I would like to say again, I, I thought it was great that you increased maintenance, and I think it's so important to be increasing that number, and I really hope it doesn't affect maintenance ultimately, and air conditioning.
Mr. Asa?
So, from what I understand, the calculations with the insurance do sound correct. And Mrs. Vitale can confirm that, but it sounds to me as if the 800, 800,000 of that reduction is, I guess you call it a wash, because it's what we had planned for, but we no longer need to expend that money. As to the, the additional reduction, you know, I think the town side has many, obviously, as a Board of Ed member, I want every penny we can get. We put forth a unified budget that we supported. But I do respect that there are other interests in town, and dedication to investing money into town buildings. I will say that we are still getting over 3% more. Would I have liked to get more? Yes. But we are still getting a 3% increase. So, I think it's important to note that this is a, a reduction in our request. Last year, we had a reduction of $700,000. This year, it's 625,000, or $600,000. I am confident that our administration and our new superintendent will do their best to figure out how to work with this reduction, so that it has the least impact on education to our children. Obviously, as you know, I'm a big advocate for maintenance and facilities, and that seems to be an area where they always take from. But I, I'm confident that this board can work, and I hope that it doesn't get any bigger of a reduction. I, I hope that that's all it is.
Chris?
Ms. Gerber?
Yeah, basically, what, in terms of the healthcare and the 600,000 being a place that we will need to find safe. You know, based on past years when we have had reductions, I think the superintendent, all of the different superintendents that I've either served with or watched from the audience, usually tend to hold off for the time being, because we don't know what the other town bodies are going to be doing. So, I mean, we can certainly cross our fingers and hold our breath and hope that this will be it, but, you know, I, and I'm sure that over time, Mr. Cummings and his staff will be, I'm sure they've already started looking, and I'm sure they will continue to look over the next few months, to find ways to not impact students and programs and staff to the best of their abilities. That said, you know, as you know from having followed our meetings and looking at our more recent budgets, and this year's budget, there's really not an awful lot new in this budget. I mean, this was, you know, we've all called it a maintenance budget, for the most part. There aren't any new major initiatives, you know, because those usually tend to be the first things, the first places where you look, if there is a reduction, you know, look for something new, because it's something we don't have yet. But in this case, we don't really have that. This board has been very vocal about supporting maintenance, so, and I know that Mr. Cummings has heard us, and I know that he feels strongly about it as well, so I would think he would do everything in his power to avoid going down that maintenance road. So I, I'm not really sure. I, and, and you know, and that said, we also know that, you know, there may be some things that the superintendent brings forward that we disagree with. Or there may be some things that he doesn't bring forward that Board of Ed members say, can we add this to the list? I mean, that certainly has happened in past years, where not everything that the superintendent has recommended has ended up going through, and some things that he didn't have ended up, if not going through, at least being discussed. So, it's really kind of a to-be-continued as of now. But, you know, I'm, I'm optimistic that he will do everything in his power to avoid, you know, impacting our students. But 600,000 is 600,000 on a maintenance budget, so.
Ms. Maxum Caneli?
So, two points regarding your mention of the 800,000. That's a number we're extremely comfortable with, because it was produced from Central Office. So that's a number we are all, that, that's, well, they produced the bigger number, we're the ones who checked it at that, correct?
The guidance, the rate changed, and-
Right.
The number right now, the 800,000, everyone's on the same page with that. That said, this, there is still some volatility in what the number will be. You know, once open enrollment comes, that number might change. Spoke to the first select woman about that, and she said, if it ends up changing, then we'll have to revisit that, if it's not the 800,000. So, right now, I think, feel comfortable with that.
Well, I'm simply saying, we produce the number. We're comfortable that it's accurate of the moment.
We, that's, no.
We calculated the number based on the rates provided.
The new rates provided.
Which is what I just said.
Yes.
So you're not correcting what I'm saying, you're adding to it, but you're not correcting what I just said. So I'm going to get back, I'm going to get back to my answer, Ms. Vitale.
I am agreeing with what you're saying, but-
In the moment.
In the moment, just, I want to be clear, the 800,000-
I understand that. So that's your answer. So I'm getting back to your point, which is, that number is a reflect, is an accurate reflection of now. The 600, I would disagree that staff is going to do what they can to keep that away from children.
Okay.
Could I just reiterate, too, about the air conditioning? I do think it's still connected to maintenance. I know it's a separate, it's separated out in the budget, but it's a really significant way that we're maintaining our assets, and also keeping our children and our teachers healthy and safe. So I really hope it's also prioritized. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Representative Vergara. Would anyone else like to ask a question, make a comment? Going once? Looks like that's it. Ms. Vitale, I give your meeting back to you.
Mr. DeWitt, on behalf of the board, thank you very much for your service tonight. You were an excellent-
Thank you for having me.
An excellent moderator, and I appreciate, you know, being part of the discussion. Thank you. And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Asa, all in favor. It is unanimous. We are adjourned, and thank you to the public for coming out.